I'm going to call to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, February 21st, 2022. It is 6:04. We're in the Nashua North Boardroom. And I am going to juggle clerk and president tonight, which is fine. So just bear with me. So I am going to ask. So I'll read the prayer and then... Sorry. You roll call first. How fast we forget these things. Mr... We have a couple people on the phone. We have Mr. Claffey, Ms. Raymond, and Ms. Ziem. Are we all in consensus with them being on the phone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Are they alone?
But can you guys announce if you are alone in the room when I call on you? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes, alone.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
My 11-year-old is in the hotel room with me, but she'll be leaving in a minute.
Okay. Ms. Lamphier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Ziem?
Here, and I'm alone. Did you hear me?
Yes, I did. Sorry, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you.
Ms. Bishop is here. We also have Dr. McKinney, Dr. Sarfey, Mr. Parker, Mr. Donovan, and Ms. Carey. I'm going to read the prayer and then I will ask Ms. Johnson to lead us in the pledge. Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. So up first tonight, we have a couple of presentations which we're super excited for. We're going to have Ledgestreet first, and then Michael Affleberg has a presentation. And then we're going to be... I'll let you guys know, we're going to kind of mix up the agenda if we're all on board with it. So Ledgestreet, you're up. This is Mr. Miller and Ms. Gagny.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm Chaz Miller, principal of Ledgestreet Elementary, and this is Rosio Gagny, our assistant principal. And we're going to give you a little view into the brain research behind how we're aligning Tier One, our general instruction, with how the brain wants to learn. So the first thing is, first thing to know is that the brain wants to learn about itself. It likes hearing about itself. It likes talking about itself. So don't be surprised if you're kind of leaning into this, or it's kind of interesting. And what we learned is there are four things that a brain wants to learn, and this is based on the research. The first thing is your brain wants to survive. And when you think about it, that's a no-brainer. Thank you. All right, strap in. They don't get any better than that. So a brain wants to be safe. It thrives on predictability, has a need for control. What we know is that stressed brains don't learn well. So at Ledg, for instance, we have our morning meetings. And at our morning meetings, we specifically ask children, "How do you feel today?" And that's so that when that child says, "Hey, I feel great," we know that child's ready to learn. If a child says, "Nah, my brother kept me up last night," or "I was feeling... I'm feeling terrible this morning, I'm feeling sick," or there's trauma that might be coming up, we know that we have to support them in those emotions first before we get them into their learning, because stressed brains don't learn well. Rituals and routines are really important to your brain. They want to know, your brain wants to know, the same thing is going to happen in ritual routines every single day, so that class expectations are in place, that systems and structures with how they move throughout the classroom and things like that are in place, because that predictability goes into that safety. And then voice and choice. So it's not just this generation of students that wants voice and choice. It's there. Everybody's brain wants voice and choice, because that goes into, if I build this system, then I am kind of be... I'm able to predict a little bit about how this system is going to go, which makes it feel a little bit better, a little bit more safe, and more able to survive.
Number two, your brain wants to know why. When you think about your actions and your general motivation, they're all driven by the why. In the learning environment, the students, the brain has to be aware of what they're learning by understanding the why. And at Ledgestreet, that looks like processing the learning target with peers within 9 minutes and 59 seconds. This has to be revisited for students to make the connections to prior knowledge to support future learning.
Say it to save it. Number three is your brain wants to build pathways. So it wants to hear itself talk repeatedly. It likes to move around while thinking, and it learns about by doing things repetitively over and over and over. At Ledg, one of the highest-leverage things we've been doing is a simple thing, turn and talk. That it's really important that as kids learn things, they're able to actually turn and process their learning, because it puts it into a different place in their brain than is... It's different as if they were just sitting and listening to the lesson and then retaining it that way. So, for instance, in our classroom, you'll see that even, you know, whether it's a kindergarten classroom through a fifth-grade classroom, if they're doing an ELA lesson, the teacher might say, "Okay, I'd like everyone to turn and talk." What do they think this character is feeling and why? And you'll see kids automatically turn to each other, start talking to each other, process their learning within 25, 30 seconds, come right back to the teacher. And that's the act of engagement. That's the act of engagement of every single student in that classroom. And when you multiply that over hundreds of times throughout the week that these kids are turning and processing, and then multiply that over all the weeks of the year, kids are processing so much more and retaining and getting so much more powerful learning because they're able to talk it out. So what we say at Ledg is we say it to save it.
Number four, this is the last one. It says, "The brain wants to know the big picture." When you guys think back on information, your brain uses visuals. At Ledgestreet, we're incorporating those visuals through models, representation. This allows the brain to stay more engaged. These methods not only support students that are learning the English language, but all of our students.
So there's one final thought, and I could not... We could not do a presentation on the brain without presenting the great neuromyth. I thought the music would be a little bit louder than that. If everyone could just stop laughing so we could hear the music. There are no learning styles. Okay, so if you have ever said, or you have heard people say, "I'm a visual learner," you're not. They're not. There is no visual learner, kinesthetic learner, auditory learner. Science has shown that there, through the brain research, there is no scientific basis to visual learning styles, kinesthetic. Your brain actually learns all those ways. And your brain will kind of decide, based on the situation, which one of those it's going to use. But there's nobody who's predisposed to learn one of those ways. So feel free to correct your friends and family. And you can say, "You know, I learned that from Ledg," and you're welcome. So the last one is, this was taken from the Burke Group, our work with the Burke Group in Olympia, Washington. And we've been working with them for a few years now in the brain research. And Dwayne Baker is the president of Burke, a super-intelligent guy. And I didn't know, this is just a fun fact I wanted to present, that he and I are actually twins. And a lot of times when I show this picture, people are like, "Oh, my gosh, Chaz, which one's you?" I'm actually... I'm the one on the right. Wait, wait, I'm on the le... No, I'm on the right. I'm the one on the right. So in case you wanted to know. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. That was... I love puns and bad jokes. Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Next up, we have Michael Affleberg, who just needs a podium and a microphone, he says.
Thank you. I'm going to pass around a couple of things. So you can take one of these and pass it around.
I should note, Michael is from the United Way. Oh, and we lost Heather, so I have to call her back in.
Thank you.
Are you back?
Yeah, I'm back. Hello.
All set?
Thank you.
Yes. Heather got disconnected, so I was...
Nope, no problem.
Reconnecting her.
Had I known that on the agenda I would be following such a brainy presentation, I might have objected to the order. But oh, well. So my name's Mike Affleberg. I'm with the United Way of Greater Nashua. And I have no formal presentation, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about a project which we have undertaken on behalf of the community to express gratitude for the heroes in our schools who have done such an incredible job over the past couple of years under incredibly difficult circumstances. Couple of weeks ago, I have a... One of my staff members is very well-connected with friends in the schools, an ex-teacher, retired teacher. And she started talking in one of our staff meetings about some of the issues that she's, you know, hearing about, things, you know, related to morale and just difficulties in the school. And we just sort of expanded on that conversation, as these things often do, and came up with the idea that maybe it's time for the community to have a campaign of gratitude, a campaign demonstrating the love and admiration and appreciation that we have for all of the educators and school heroes in our midst. And frankly, that also includes all of you in front of me and many of you behind me. So I have a letter I'm going to read to you, and I'll tell you a little bit about our campaign. "To the attention of Jen Bishop, Chair Board of Ed, Garth McKinney, Interim Superintendent, Nashua School District, and Adam Marku, President, Nashua Teachers Union. On behalf of United Way of Greater Nashua and the Nashua community, I would like to express our heartfelt appreciation and admiration for the incredible work you have done supporting our students and their families during the COVID-19 pandemic. This period has not been easy, not for the community, not for those working in the schools, not for the school administration and the Board of Education, and certainly not for the students and their families. However, all of you have persevered in the name of doing what is right to balance the physical, social, and emotional and educational needs of our kids. While we may have disagreed on the right approach to take, and while emotions have flared at times, putting a cloud over the work, in the end, we all agree that it is vitally important to support the students in our community, many of whom represent our most vulnerable residents. At this time, we would like to thank all of you for your work. We would like to thank the teachers and paraeducators for your resilience in developing new ways to reach children academically in light of challenges, including distance learning. We would like to thank our maintenance and janitorial staffs for ensuring that our schools are safe places for kids to learn. We would like to thank the school guidance counselors, social workers, and nurses for developing innovative approaches to reaching and taking care of kids. We would like to thank our school food service workers for ensuring that our children remain fed in times of great economic uncertainty. We would like to thank our school secretaries for making sure that our families stayed connected to their schools and in the loop in a changing landscape. We would like to thank our school librarians and IT professionals for making sure that kids have the tools and resources to learn in a challenging environment. We would like to thank our school administrators for working with families and our volunteers, including our Board of Education, for striving to lead with positivity in times of strife. And to anybody else I might have missed, thank you for your efforts, small or large, recognized or unseen, you have made all the difference. To all of you, we say thank you for your incredible work on behalf of a grateful community. You have shown us, as we are fond of saying at United Way, that great things really can happen when we live united. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mike. That was very thoughtful. That was very thoughtful. Thank you so much. Do we want to just... I'm going to move over to the students. You can stay there. Hopefully, that's it for our game of musical chairs tonight. Okay, so next up, we have the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
May I ask a question? We had three presentations here.
Nashua North couldn't make it tonight.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check.
Can I have a second for the consent agenda, please?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have to roll call.
Can I speak on this consent agenda?
Yeah.
I'm not going to... Again, I'm not going to support this. Today, I had to go back and listen to some minutes because of policy and a couple of other things. And if we had forbade a minutes, and I know that we need to hire somebody to type our minutes for us, I think it's in our best interest because to sit there and have to go through the whole meeting to just find what you need, if we had the minutes, it would have been a lot simpler, because there's quite a few things in policy that didn't come down corrected. And I think that, you know, while summary minutes are great, but when we have speakers coming in, I think it's a lot easier, and I think it's in the best interest of the public that we have these minutes versus having to listen to the tape. So I will not support this again. Thank you.
Okay. So on the consent agenda, is there any other comments? No. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop says yes. So motion passes eight to two.
It would be seven.
Seven to two, sorry. Okay. So I wanted to move things around on the agenda, just to allow for... We have some more guests there at the end of the meeting for under new business. I don't want to make any votes on anything, but I would like to have the presentation on masks and then the presentation on the GPA. And I was hoping we could have those presented. I don't want to vote on them until after both public comments, so that we can hear what everybody wants to say, but I'd like to have the presentations first. A, so Ms. Bagley can head out, I know she has another meeting, if we have any questions. And then for you guys. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd prefer to keep the agenda in order.
What?
I would prefer to keep the agenda in order, but I'm not going to block it.
Okay. So the mask presentation. Dr. McKinney, do you want to take the floor?
Yes. Bobby Bagley was kind enough to come and provide a health update, so I'm just going to defer to her, and she has some information to share with the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you prefer I just stand with you?
Thank you for making time for us.
And I don't have another meeting if you wanted me to stick around.
Oh.
I know, it'll be the first time I get to hang out. I'm Bobby Bagley, the Director of the Division of Public Health and Community Services, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to just give a brief update of where we stand situationally with what we're seeing with COVID. So right now, as of Friday, the state's database has not been updated. I'm not sure if they had off today. I know we did. But on Friday, there were 846 cases that were announced, and this was an average of 371 cases over the past seven-day period. This is a little bit of an uptick compared to what we had been seeing, but it's not an uptick that raises the downward trend at all. It's a 42% decrease compared to the seven, previous seven days. So for instance, the day before, I think there were less than 100 cases reported. Who knows why? But the following day, 846 cases were. And all of this information can be found on the DHHS website. And I always encourage folks to go and look there, because it shows a nice graph of what we're seeing right now. So for our state, right now, there's been over 293,000 cases. There are 3,073 active cases. Again, all these numbers are going down, that we expected to see around this time now. The test positivity rate for the state is at 7.8%, another good sign, and an average of 5,911 tests are done daily. One of the good things that we're also seeing is that the hospitalization rate has gone down, and it has been consistent over the past few months. There are currently 108 individuals that are in the hospital. Our deaths are at 2,333. We're averaging about 3.5 deaths per day in the state. Now, what's important is what our Nashua numbers look like, right? Because the state numbers are going to be reflective of the entire state from north to southeast to west. So in Nashua, currently, our case rate per 100,000 is at 403.8. One of the metrics that we look at is to see that number under 100. So it has come down significantly, but it's not down below 100,000 as of yet. Our test positivity rate is at 14.6%. This is another metric that we use to see how we're doing. And we like to see that number under 5%. So if you go on the state's website and you look at the status of our state, we're still at substantial spread, right? Because these numbers, although they're coming down nicely, and I'll just show you my little picture here. I love this. Oh, I'm so happy about that. Look at that. Going down significantly. But it's down to where we have about, like I said, the 371 cases per day. So it's not down low enough for us to change a lot of the metrics that we want to... That we have in place right now for keeping things from spreading. As of Friday, we had 362 cases that were reported for Nashua, and we have a total of 154 active cases. Again, all trending and a positive space for us. We unfortunately did have four new deaths reported for Nashua, so we're up to 140. So what does all this mean in context of the discussion that Mr. McKinney is going to have today with regards to masking? So the CDC still recommends that in the school setting that kids still have their mask on because they're indoors. With what we're seeing right now with these numbers going down, and hopefully, Mr. McKinney will talk about the decrease in the clusters, the number of cases that you're seeing in the schools, you're seeing everything trend down. So things are looking really positive for us. Our recommendation, of course, would be that, you know, we would continue to do all that we can to keep our kids safe. But as these numbers keep trending down, we see that we're headed in the right direction. We would also... So I think I should stop now, and then you give more of what you're going to talk about, and then we could talk in between if that works out well. So that's where we are right now. Things are looking good for our state. If we continue doing what we're doing, stay the course, we'll continue to see these numbers go down. And I'm hoping that by the time we get to spring, we're just like, hopefully golden, but we'll see. All right? Thank you.
Dr. McKinney?
Did you want to speak to the notice in the packet, or do you want to speak to the GPA or the classroom task force piece and then circle back to the other part?
No, we can do your piece.
Okay. So included in your packet is a recommendation for health and safety until after break. So I know it's a large packet, but the last page in the packet speaks to a change in health and safety. So the six things that are included here are that we'll continue to follow guidance from the National Department of Public Health and Community Service. We'll ask that face masks be continued to be worn on school buses and district transportation. It's really a federal piece in terms of legislation in law. Anyone who tests positive for COVID-19 will be required to isolate and quarantine per the isolation and quarantine guidance from the state. The fourth thing is any clusters or outbreaks may require 14-day masking in classrooms or schools, again, in consultation with public health. And then after, 14 days after we come back from February vacation, so beginning on March 21, face masks will strongly be recommended for that time period. As you can remember, we had a difficult time after the winter break. Folks traveled, got together over December. Staffing was really in a tough shape. We had to close for three days there. So it's a preventative measure to keep the building staffed and make it available for kids. And then lastly, for students and staff returning from a five-day isolation period, masking is required for five days following return, consistent, again, with state guidance there. So those are the six things recommended to the board to consider, along with amending the reopening plan from the beginning of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to vote on this until the end. I want us to hear public comments in regards to this. So if we could just ask questions and clarifications until then. So questions, clarifications? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I got a couple of questions from Ms. Bagley. I just pulled up on my phone, so everybody can see. I'm looking at the little tiny dot of Nashua here, and I don't know if we can zoom this in, but we're more towards the lighter end of the green. We're going towards the lighter end of the green here. And so here's my question. Nashua has 91,658 residents right now. I went online, I did all this. New Hampshire has 1.3 million. We'll just keep it at that. We have 154 active cases. Now, active cases are people who actually have COVID. Am I correct? Okay. Total cases, new cases, would be the ones that we have been testing, that we don't have case... We don't have the test back on, the new cases. Because I keep asking you the difference between active and cases, and I never get that straight answer here. What's the difference between an active case and a case? Because if it's a case that we've got a new case, then that should be added into the active case to calculate everything. So what is a new case?
So a new case would be... So this is, and it's over 14 days, right? So a new case would be any new case that has come in in that time period that they're given that number for. And then your active cases would be those who have not... Who are still actively contagious, right? And so I might have gotten... I may have tested positive 14 days ago, my 14 days included in that. But my active cases would be those that are still considered, you know, within that five-day... Now we're down to five-day, 10-day period. So that's the difference between those two.
Okay. But then you would take your active cases and your new cases. They would still be the same. Because if someone is still sick with COVID, and you've got a new case and you've got an active case, they would still be a case. A case is a case, whether they're contagious before five... In the five-day to 10-day period or in the 14-day period. So we're playing around... And we've been playing around with this since day one. And I keep coming out, and I keep talking about this over and over again. Let's get the facts straight. We have 154 active cases here right now in Nashua. There is no reason why these masks should still be on kids. Look at this. And I'm going to keep showing all this. This is California with the kids outside. Is this right? Is this absolutely right? These kids should have these masks on? They're having problems with hearing, seeing the teachers, how they speak, the lips, the language barrier. They can't hear. The kids are getting sick. They're getting sinus infections. They're getting also... You can get Legionnaire Disease. You're getting strep throat. These are all things from these cloth masks, and we keep going back to the same thing. So now, as I look through everything, I'm parents, numerous parents that keep coming in. Thank you. Thank you. That emails after emails after emails for the last several weeks, "Please take the masks off our children." Who are we listening to? The parents should have the options of whether or not these kids wear the masks. We did this last year. And to bring it back after school vacation, when the numbers are going down, and they keep going down here, and we're still going to keep these kids a mask? I just don't understand this. I mean, it just keeps going on.
I'm sorry. I'm going to... Ms. Johnson? I'm going to have us all stop until noise stops from the audience. So I think I didn't go over the rules again, but please be respectful of the meeting. I think everybody knows where everybody stands on this. You guys have been here enough. I know which side is which. We know where Ms. Johnson's going to fall on this. There is no need to...
On the sword again. On the sword again, on the sword. I also want to say that we're, every state now, state and communities are lifting these masks. Hudson just did recommendation. Hollis, I believe, does not have masks, or they're optional. How are we in Nashua? On the 28th, your own Board of Health, that I listened to the meeting about a week or two weeks ago, and I made public comment, isn't even recommending it. The Board of Alderman, as of the 28th, as of tomorrow night, they're rescinding the ordinance because they feel it's no longer necessary. And I'm just going to bring this up here because I'm a little bit annoyed. When the teachers come in, we don't have the police. When the parents come in, we have the police officers back there. That's not right. Are these parents domestic terrorists? This is not right at all. These parents pay taxes in this city. These parents' kids are in the system. And if these parents were to pull the kids out of the system, we wouldn't have teachers in the system anymore. Enough is enough is enough. These parents should not be treated as second-class citizens anymore. Enough is enough. And that's rude that the police are here. They're not going to do anything. Thank you.
I apologize, Paula. I actually thought I got an email from you about the police presence, so I apologize for that, but continue on.
Mine was because we had it all over because the AFT was coming down with masses of teachers. That was my question. But normally, they're here because of the parents.
Well, I wanted to respect what you were saying, too, so.
But you also said that you weren't going to do it. So the only reason I just sent it to you was because, only because they talked, I got an email talking about the massive amount of teachers that were coming tonight to protest. And I could see it's a holiday because there's not a lot of people in the audience. But we didn't discuss it anymore. You didn't talk to me.
No, we didn't discuss it anymore. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Bagley or Dr. McKinney? Ms. Gilio?
I have a question for Dr. McKinney, based on the proposal that you've made. And we're going to be in consultation with, with Ms. Bagley. But what if, and I hope this is not what's going to happen, but what if by that date in March, cases are starting to climb again, and we've already passed the motion to go to the new mask policy effective that date in March? Would we be able to revisit at that point if we were having a spike?
Sure, I can contact the board president, have a special board meeting, and revisit the guideline that's been put in place. Madam Chair, I didn't know if Ms. Bagley wanted to be able to speak to the recommendation that's in here because the two of us spoke, or if you had any further questions about it.
Do you, Ms. Bagley, do you want to speak to the waiting the two weeks after February vacation for changing the mask policy?
We actually support that and think that that's a good idea because when we think about, you know, our experience with COVID over the past two years, we've seen that when there's a break or there's an opportunity for folks to gather together, which, you know, that's expected, you know, at this point in time where we are, you know, two years later. We saw the evidence of that occur during the Thanksgiving and the December break. So we think it's actually a wise decision to wait until after, two weeks after the break, to look at making this recommendation. And if you heard the recommendation that was made, the recommendation is for strongly recommending. And so it does give what folks have been asking for, the opportunity for, for parents to make a decision. You know, our hope and goal is that parents will make the safest decision for not just their kids in school, but then also thinking about the staff and the teachers, and then also other members that they might have at home that might be immunocompromised. And so you want to think about that, you know, with making that decision. Because the, you know, the schools, it's a large place, where there's lots of folks that are coming in. Our vaccine rate and our kids, because we just started to get vaccines in the latter part of the fall. So we want to actually try and close that gap as well. So we're actually offering vaccination clinics so we can get as many parents to get their kids vaccinated. The more kids that are vaccinated, it decreases that amount of, again, virus in the environment. And so that combination of doing those things together will help us see a decrease in, you know, the issue that we're seeing with exposure. But that two-week window period is actually going to be really ideal for the school.
Perfect. And we do actually have a board meeting on the 14th of March, a week before the 21st happens. So if we see any number changes, we have a perfect opportunity right there to address it. Ms. Brown?
Just wanted to ask for a couple of clarifications. You can literally feel the hope leaving this room right now. So at first, I just, so I just want to be clear, at the strongly recommended, there will be no enforcement of masks mandatory under this recommendation. And my second question is actually for you, Ms. Bagley. So, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, the more, the newer recommendations are that the masks actually protect the wearer more than they protect the people who are wearing. Previously, we were talking about how much they were protecting the people around us. My mask protects you. Now, the new thought is that your mask protects yourself. And you've put out a chart, I think, recently that had, essentially, it was blocks that said the length of time would you wear a paper mask or a cloth mask is pretty limited on its benefits. Is that accurate? So really, unless you have a fully sealed mask that's a well-fitting N95, that's pretty much the only way you can get full protection. Is that accurate?
So there were different information that was put out on the efficacy of the different types of masks that we wear. All of them are, all of them work, all right? The cloth masks seem to have the least amount of efficacy in a situation where there is virus and individuals that are wearing a cloth mask, if they are less than six feet for longer than 30 minutes, they have a higher risk of picking up COVID. And then the surgical mask or the second layer up. So if you have on a well-fitted surgical mask, the time is longer that you can be in that space. And if you have the N95 or K95, the time is even longer. So the point of the information that came out for that was around the efficacy of mask use period. And the goal with that is to just show if, again, there is virus circulating, there's the different degrees of masking that you want to consider and have available for individuals when they're in a situation where they're exposed longer in a setting where you don't know what the status is. And that's, again, why we're trying to increase vaccination rate, because then you decrease the amount of virus that could be in any environment. As far as how they work, wearing your mask protects you, the wearer, and those that are around you. Because if you're wearing a covering over your face, then you're not releasing respiratory droplets in the air. And so that covering does help both the wearer and those that are around you in that environment.
Would you, so our class periods, our daytime classes for elementary kids are six hours. Our middle schools are an hour, and our high school kids are in 90-minute blocks. Based on the chart, we're looking at 30 minutes efficiency for the masks that most people wear. Would you recommend the district shifting to N95s for everyone?
Well, it depends on what's happening in the classroom. So I'm not, I haven't been to every single class to see how close kids sit, you know, with each other. The way that the state put out the information was three and a half feet was supposed to be a safe distance with your cloth mask. And I don't believe that they are considering changing that. If there are individuals that are higher risk, if they have an immunocompromised system, those would be individuals that you would encourage to wear the higher protection mask, the surgical mask or the N95s if they have them. And again, encouraging vaccination for as many as who are age-eligible to get vaccinated is going to help that as well. If the school has the opportunity to get more of the surgical mask, those would be what I would consider the most protective and the most appropriate for your school-age kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Couple of things. Ms. Bagley, I remember when I showed the picture of the students and I covered their faces because I read from CDC. CDC said, in order for masks to be protecting you, it'd have to be completely tight. And I walk around, and you could see a lot of people with these cloth masks and the paper masks. They pucker here. So germs can get in with the puckering because it's not sealed tightly. Am I correct there? Because I remember reading the CDC, and I asked you, I think it was you, it was somebody else from the Health Department. And I did read that from CDC. Am I correct?
So the well-fitted masks are recommended for individuals that have been exposed or tested positive for COVID. When they come back after that five days, the instructions are for them to have the tightly-fitted mask because they could still be spreading the virus.
I thought I read it all should be tightly fitted. And let me ask you a question. The N95s, aren't those considered medical devices that we're asking to put on our children? It is on this FDA. It is, it is states that it's medical devices. And people who wear them too long can pass out because they're losing oxygen, which they've also said with children with the mask, they're losing oxygen to the brain, and they're, they're having problems.
I haven't read that about people losing oxygen to their brain.
I've read that. I've gone through all these sites already. You know I come prepared to these meetings, you know. I guess that my concern is here. We're talking all the way to March 21st. The city is rescinding everything as of the 28th of February. Your own Department of Health, the doctors over there, made the recommendations. You know, you can go into a store, you can go shopping, go to a football game, and nobody wears masks. You can do everything around the country. But we are going to continue to have these children who were not super-spreaders to begin with. And we're going to continuously mask them. And I'm, and I had, my friends and I had like a brunch this morning, and we were discussing this. The kids, the ears, the mask behind the ears on the face, kids, acne, and even adults are having problems here. And we're going to just continue this. And I'm just shocked that we're talking now till after school. So now we're going to go from now until March, and then two weeks after that, then we're getting close to April vacation again. So now, when they come back from April vacation, it's another two weeks. So you know what? Why don't we just call it out the way it's going to be? These kids are going to wear masks till the end of the school year again, and that's just the way it's going to be. And if I was a parent in this system, I would start pulling my child out now because of the fact that you are dictating to me as a parent. And you should not be dictating to us as parents or any parent in this room, optional. And I would suggest, and I would request the board to please, and we have no policy here. We keep making motions here. So if any parent is, we have a reopening plan here, but a reopening plan is not a policy. I have been told if I want to sit down with Dr. McKinney, I can sit down and write a plan. That's not my job because then I'll be told I'm micromanaging. It's, it's the administration's plan. There should have been a plan for children who have medical conditions when they can't wear a mask so they don't get thrown out of school. There should be a plan here for children that have religious issues, religious beliefs. They shouldn't be thrown out of school. There should be a plan that if, in fact, we feel that there is a super-spreader here, that we could put the masks on if needed, if the parents want it. We have no plan here. We have no policy. We keep voting on stuff with no policy for anybody to even look at. We have a policy for everything else. We're going to be talking about policies tonight. We have policies. But the most important thing for our kids in this system here, in the district, we don't have a policy so parents can go back. So if anything happens in the school, there's a policy to go by. We're just winging it. And I feel bad for a lot of these special-ed kids that have been escorted out of school because they could not wear a mask. Shame on us. And it's, and there has been. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So I don't think we have any, I mean, we're asking a lot of the same questions that we've been asking the whole time, so I think. Oh, Ms. Darling?
Bobby Bagley, could you explain the reasoning behind not extending the mask mandate for Nashua, but suggest advising that we extend it for the schools?
So the, the city mask mandate is totally separate from the school's mask mandate. The same, the city's mask mandate was-
Guys, I would like to hear this, and I, just stop. Sorry, Ms. Bagley, go on.
Yeah, sorry. So if you recall, the mask mandate for the school has been in place as a recommendation from the state and from the CDC. The mask mandate that was instituted in January for the, the city was because we saw, and I'll just give this to you, we saw this nice spike here. And so we put that in place as a protective factor for our hospitals and to decrease the number of cases that were circulating in the community. The more cases that there are in the community, the more cases that, that can be in your workplaces and in your schools. At one point, we had gotten up to like 5,000 cases per day. And so as a result of that extreme number of cases that we were seeing, Omicron is very, very contagious. And so as a result of that variant, we put the mask mandate in place for the city to protect two resources. Our hospitals being one, because we were also seeing an increase in the number of people that were being hospitalized. Because even though Omicron was less severe for most people because there was so much infection, it was increasing the exposure to individuals that had underlying health conditions, chronic health conditions. And those individuals were finding themselves in the hospital two weeks, three weeks, you know, even several months after becoming infected. And so it was put in place for that factor. There was also a projection that had come out of the University of Washington that our hospitals would be over, that they would not have the staffing or the resources to take on the number of cases that were projected for them in February. And so by putting the mask mandate in place for the city, that was what that was for, to protect that resource. And then also, if you had masks on it, it also protected individuals in the community as well, and therefore also protecting your school. So there's always a secondary effect that also occurs with these. And so the, the mask mandate for the city was separate from what was going on with the schools, because the schools already had their mask mandate in place.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll address this at the end of the meeting under new business when it comes time to vote, and we can listen to public comment. But I will be ending this discussion now. Thank you, Ms. Bagley, for coming.
Welcome.
If anybody has any more questions, I'm sure Ms. Bagley is available via email. But next up is our GPA. Are you guys ready for this? Okay.
Miss Bishop, included in the packet in, is it your final page? The final out of the, yeah, 60-odd pages. So the class rank task force has been meeting, and included are the two final recommendations. One is to align the GPA scale with competency, so an unweighted scale from A-plus to no credit. And then the second recommendation is to use the combination of the GPA and the number of credits to identify diplomas with distinct types, going to sort of Latin honor system, and they're outlined in the memo there. And the recommendation is to begin the adoption of these two recommendations above, beginning with the class of 2026. So while there was consensus from the group there, I know there's been other emails and other things there. Mr. Burns was going to be here tonight and present, unfortunately, he's not feeling well. But Mr. Principal Richard, Keith Richard from South, is here. He can speak to these two recommendations as well as answer any questions from the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Richards. Okay, this is your opportunity to ask questions and get some clarification on the GPA. Does nobody have any questions?
Well, not that everyone's jumping right to it. Is there a reason why we would wait till, what was it, the 2026? 2026?
Typically, any changes we make, typically, we always do it with an incoming class, just not changing the rules on any class mid-game, you know, and just to use that analogy. But that's something that we've typically have done in past practice whenever there's been a change with any type of grading practices and things like that.
I mean, haven't we already kind of completely changed the kids' last two years? They've been through such like an extreme variance of what we usually grade for. I almost wonder how reflective the GPA and the class rank currently is. Can you speak to any of that?
I mean, certainly in the past years, we've certainly had some changes. I know spring of March 2020, there were certainly some changes we had with the past bail that went in and things like that. So again, it was just a committee discussion. I felt like there's some students that have maybe made decisions based on the rules that were laid out, not the rules, but how GPA would be calculated currently. And it just, there was some discussions among the, the committee that just, with this kind of a big change, that just starting fresh with a new class coming in. But we did discuss that going back and forth, and I think that was just the overcoming reasoning of the committee, just kind of came to that consensus that we just start with a new class coming in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lambier?
I have a question. I had heard that, that a lot of, a lot of the kids are able to skip ahead and take AP classes because their parents are able to pay for them to take classes outside of the school district. And that seems like they have an unfair advantage. And of course, that's going to be a minority of children. Wouldn't it be better to make the change now so that all of the kids in the district are on a more solid and equal footing?
So not aware of many parents paying for courses for kids to come in. We do have some students who might take a V-Lax course, which is an online, New Hampshire High School credited. So we do transcript those credits in, which checks off some of our requirements and does allow students sometimes to get ahead to take AP courses later on, gets to them quicker. For example, you might take your physical science or your biology through a V-Lax, therefore you can step in and get your AP bio quicker, your AP chemistry quicker as a sophomore, junior, things like that. as a sophomore, junior, things like that. So again, I think a lot of those decisions are made early on. For some of the kids that are doing that, they're made in their ninth and 10th grade years. So some of those kids, I think, have already made those decisions. Again, if it's the will of the board to start sooner rather than later, you know, I think that's, you know, for you guys to discuss and make decision. We just felt it was cleaner starting with a new class coming in. So May, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to give a little bit of clarification to Ms. Lamphier's question. I do know of the program that she is referring to. I believe the name is like the Johns Hopkins Gift and Talented Program. It's like a summer enrichment course. But obviously, that would be more of a specific question for the directors of guidance. But it is, to my knowledge, and has been in the past four years, a program that at least Nashua South has offered to some students.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
If Ms. Lamphier has another question, a follow-up, I'll let her know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, what would be the repercussions if we did it earlier?
I don't think there'd be any repercussions other than maybe some students upset about setting up their course, courses the way under this current system. That's about it. There'd be, I don't see any negative academic consequences.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I can't see starting with the, doing it this year. I mean, this year's over with. So you're starting 2023, we're in 2022. So it's there. I mean, if I was a student in the class right now, and I had my ranking in GPA, and you took it away from me, and I was the parent, I mean, because you're starting, you're talking next year, next, okay. I, like everybody else, bombarded with 20, I would, I don't know. It started around 1, what time was it today? 1:19, and it went up to 1:27. Listened to us on the class ranks, and you knew it was all scripted because it was forwarded, 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 forwarded. I guess my problem is, is that everything that came out of all these emails were just from Nashua South students, nothing from the North students. So that's what I got on my phone. And I know we all got bombarded with it today. And I don't have a problem with that. I like to listen to the students. But they were talking about, the one that I just pulled up, talked about, and I, let me see if I can find it again. It, it did talk about the Latin honors system. So I went online to look at the Latin honors system because that's what you're talking about. So what does that have to do with, because it does still have to do with GPA, the Latin honors system. So, you know, I, let me just say this. We've talked about this to some point. We have never gotten into a full discussion as the board. And I don't want to hastily vote on anything at this point in time tonight because it's not going to affect anything right now. I think we need to have a real full discussion, look at everything from each point with the Latin honors system, with the GPA, the class ranking, because there are kids that worked. I want to bring the level up. I want to bring it up, not bring it down for the kids. I want to see kids excel. And I'm not too sure about this because I don't really understand all this that's been presented to us tonight. And I'm saying that we table this, and we bring it back in a committee, maybe in the curriculum committee, and we can really discuss this because at this point in time, I'm not going to support this. Oh, by the way, do we have a policy on this? Because if we don't, that's another thing.
Is that a motion?
No, it's not a motion yet, Sandra. I'm just speaking on this. But you know what? I'm going to make a motion to table this and to bring it back.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you, your question about-
I'm going to withdraw my question. I'm just going to make, at this point in time, make a motion to table this and bring it into the curriculum committee so we can fully discuss this to make sure that we're making the right decision.
I was hoping we could do any and all votes at the end in new business so that we could hear input from the community first. That's why I didn't want to do any votes until we heard all the presentations and we got to the appropriate part of the agenda. Is that okay?
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion. Is that okay, Ms. Seem? And we can bring it back after?
Yep.
I would, I guess I would disagree.
Okay.
And that if we're going to postpone it, I, I said once before, this should not be crammed in the middle of an already full agenda. We have so many people who are waiting to be heard and so much going on. And I, I said last time that, I thought in fact that we had decided last time that we were going to have an individual meeting. And I think sending it to the curriculum is, is a wonderful idea. I don't see any, if we're going to postpone it and have a real workforce study, if you will, then I see no reason to postpone it at all. But if that is Mrs. Johnson's decision, then I will go with her decision. But I, I would really like to see this table so that we can do justice to it. I, I don't think this is justice. And, and, and I appreciate that this, the committee did a lot of hard work. And I, I would, I would just like to hear personally, I would like to have a real study. And I don't think with all the stress of this meeting, that we want to do justice to it. Thank you.
Okay, then I won't withdraw my motion. I'm going to make the motion to send this to the curriculum committee.
Can I request a modification of the motion? Can I motion that we move the table of the GPA and the class rank committee decision until a special meeting is scheduled? That way we can all be a part of it, rather than just-
Well, you can all be a part of the curriculum. You can speak in curriculum. You just can't vote like I can't vote on curriculum. If you want to do a special meeting, that's fine. But curriculum is really the committee that it should go to.
I mean, if there's a policy issue too, then- Yes, Heather?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to jump in with it. I actually agree with everyone that I think that, that such a huge change deserves more discussion than perhaps the limited time available to us in a full board meeting. Having said that, I disagree about curriculum being the place for it because we assigned a task force to study this and bring it back to us. I would like to hear from the task force more than a one-page memo. I'd really like to have a little bit more back and forth. I know we got a nice big report last time, which was great. Our packet was huge again this time, which is also great. But I'd really like to hear from them about some of the, what they learned, the good, the bad, the ugly, how this is going to affect colleges or trade schools or whatever. And I'd like to do it in a special meeting where we can have public comments dedicated to that topic, where we wouldn't necessarily have the time to do that in a, a committee meeting or, you know, like the curriculum or the policy meeting.
I'm in my motion.
And that's I with me.
To send it to, to the full board for a special board of ed meeting.
Did you have anything beyond that?
I was just going to say, I agree with Heather. I think it was the intent intentionally back a few months ago was to have a special meeting on just this topic so that we could really dive into it. So I support it entirely.
Okay, so, hold on. I'm going to do two things because we have, you know, let's just say in April, we'll make a special meeting.
Don't put it in, just say a special board meeting dedicated to this.
I know, but I've had conversations with the students, and I told them that we would have a concrete time that we would address this out of respect to all of the work that they've done. So February, so let's say March. So March. So before our next, for our next 14th meeting, we'll figure out a time to do this special meeting.
May I ask a question? When do we start with budget committee, budget meetings?
Hey, Heather, when do we start that?
We start that on March 2nd.
Okay.
I believe it's the 9th. Is that a Wednesday?
That is the 9th.
Oh, sorry, March 9. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Okay. Dr. McKenney?
Just to clarify, the, the original, the origin of this came at a full board meeting. And then we did some work, the pandemic happened. And then there was a recommendation to give us some time to work on this. And then in that recommendation was to bring back the final, the findings in February. So I would just caution the board when you're doing your next step, all for having a hearing, having the students there. But if you want to allow more time, dedicate one meeting to that as opposed to, again, scheduling it in a meeting in March when we have budget. So.
Yeah, no, it would be a separate, independent meeting, and then we can have public comment and ask more questions. Okay? So your motion is to, can you say it again?
My motion is to take the recommendations, bring it to a special board of ed meeting for full discussion and to have the, the task force there.
If people don't have, if people aren't using their microphones, can you turn them off?
Can I ask a question?
Yes?
Just, just to clarify something that I'm a little confused on now that we're, we're moving this ahead. This is not going to affect our class of 2022 in any way, correct? Okay, I just, I just want a clarification for that because when we're talking about not meeting until April, that's very close to-
No, March. I meant March. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, guys. I have too many hats on tonight. In March for discussion. Okay, so Ms. Johnson, did we have a second?
No, please.
You want to keep seconding it, Ms. Seem? Okay. So on the motion to table the GPA class rank committee discussion until a special meeting in March, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop says yes. So that is a unanimous vote. Dr. McKenney and I will sit down and figure out what the calendar looks like. And you guys will be up for answering questions. Okay. Okay, thank you for that. So now we're going to go back to the regular agenda. So we've done the consent agenda. We've done masking and GPA. Any items to remove from the consent agenda?
No.
No. Communication outside? No. And can somebody get me the first public comment sheet? Remind you, everybody's talking for three minutes. I will have my phone on. We'll go in 15-minute sections. Okay. The people who signed up for GPA class rank discussions, do you want to hold on to what you have to say until our special meeting is done? Okay, so when I get to your name, can you just say postpone? Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, so first public comment for items on the agenda. You guys were supposed to write down the agenda item that you were going to speak to, so please state that when you get up here. Ms. Houston is up first.
Alicia Houston, Westwood Drive. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. So the subject, obviously, that I'm going to be talking about is masking. Hudson, Hooksett, Merrimack Valley, Concord, Litchfield, London Derry, Wyndham, Salem, Merrimack, Bedford, Hollis, Amherst. All districts that have gone mask optional, all of them. If you choose to continue to make these children be masked, that is going to be a disservice to the children. They've gone through so much, and I've heard a bunch of times that children are resilient, but we've asked them to be resilient for way too long. You're seeing behavioral issues. They probably have something to do with the fact that they're getting screamed at for not wearing their masks. You have increasingly stressed out teachers, probably because they're screaming at the kids to have to wear a mask. It's not their job. It's been going on long enough. I believe Ms. Darling pointed out a really good question. If the city of Nashua is going to remove the mask mandate, why would the district want to continue it? This has been a huge point of contention between the parents and the district. And I think that it would be a very, very not, it would be a very not great idea to continue with masking these children. And if you continue to do that, I would encourage any parent who, you know, wants their child to have the option whether or not to wear masks. We're not saying take away masks 100%. We're asking for our ability as parents to choose. There's also Prenda, which is a free organization. You can create pods. There's the virtual learning, there's the Virtual Learning Academy Charter School. That's also another option. It's free. It's available to any students. You can request the district a 1933, request citing manifest educational hardship, and request the district to send your child at the schools, at the district's expense, to another district that does not have a mask mandate. You also can homeschool. There's a great organization from Granite State Home Educators, and there's private schooling. And if funding is an issue, you can look into an education freedom account. That is the level that a lot of parents are at right now, is we are so tired of it. I have a child who has a mask exemption that is not being honored. I have fought it at the district level. I fought it at the school level. I just, as of today, got a response that I now have to go back to the district level to re-appeal it instead of being able to get in front of the board. This is for a child who has a medical document exempting him from wearing a facial covering. It's been there since September, and we are still fighting about it. So if you're not going to honor the fact that there are students that do need exemptions for mask wearing, then you should hold yourselves personally liable for any of the damages that those children incur, whether it's emotional damage, mental wellness, anything. I can tell you that I had a really great outgoing child, and now I don't because he is now terrified to go to school because he can't wear a mask. He gets kicked out of school for not wearing a mask, and there is no policy on masking. It doesn't exist. I've confirmed it. All you have is a reopening plan, and you have a motion. You do not have a policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Guys, come on. Let's get through this. Crystal King, I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on the alarm, so forgive my eyes on that.
Hi, I'm Crystal. I live on Fairmont Street here in Nashua. It's no surprise on why parents showed up and, like, numbers. We haven't been here since, what, October? Like, a lot of, like Alicia and I have been here since October, but a lot of these parents haven't been, right? So like, think about that. Obviously, we're going to be talking about masks if we're signing up, right? So I want to say something. January 24th, we all got the district-wide email saying there was 265 confirmed positive cases of Code 19. On January 31st, we got the email, district-wide, 173 confirmed positives cases. On February 7th, we got the email stating that there was 78 positive cases in the Nashua School District. And last week, we got the email stating that there were 86 confirmed positive cases. This week, 44. Though we all got the email while we were sitting here, by the way. So 44 positive cases, right? Think about that. So if we take just 10,000 kids in our district, or 11,000, whatever, it falls below half a percent of test positivity rate. Half a percent, right? Let me think about this. I emailed every one of you guys on the board. One of your board members responded to me. Thank you, Ms. Seem. So my daughter last week got sick in school.
Oh, I just want to caution you on talking about your own student in school, just, just because in case-
Her and Joyce, right? So my daughter got sick in school last week. I didn't say where she goes, right? She obviously wears masks. She did not have time to pull down her mask while she got sick in school. She could have choked on that vomit, right? She could have ingested it, inhaled it when she's gasping for air, because that's what we do when we puke, right? So think about that. Think about masking our kids, right? So the email real fast that I wrote, because I can talk fast, that I wrote to the, the school board, guys, so I can share it with everyone else. I implore all of you to stand up for the kids, teachers, staff people of our district. "I implore all of you to stand up for the kids, teachers, staff people of our district. It's high time you start actually listening to what our kids, teachers, and staff people need. They need to feel welcomed, they need to feel like their opinions, thoughts, and voices are heard, they need to feel like someone cares about their hard work, not just on a teacher level. When did we stop focusing on students' strengths and start listening to what people that haven't even met our children are saying? They have not given one single thought about the students in Nashua. They don't care. Please follow suit with all of the other districts surrounding us, and please make masks optional. Please take into consideration that there are students getting sick." They are, but now flash forward, okay, so we had, what, 467 cases right before, like, school break, right? The holiday break, what we're not supposed to call it, Christmas, whatever. Real fast, I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
Okay. A month ago, we had, you know, 265 positive cases to 44 now, less than four weeks later. So, it just doesn't make sense. Make it make sense, right? Unmask our kids, let them breathe, and let them, like, the presentation on Led Street was, I took a picture of that, too, hang on one second, I'm so sorry, two seconds, right? Because I took a picture of it because I wanted to remember to say something. So, number one, your brain wants to survive. Under that, the third bullet point was, has a need for control, voice and choice, students help build class systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, sorry, we all know what we're...
I know. But we know where you stand, we get it.
Next up, we have Kara Cantwell. And Kara, what are you going to be speaking on? Masking? Okay, I'll start the timer, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kara Cantwell, I'm at H. Chatham Street, and yes, sorry, I'm going to be talking about masks. I pulled my two youngest kids out of the district at the beginning of the school year. The reason was the mask mandate was reinstated just before the start of the school year, as we all know. And I asked them, they were really worried about it when it was put back in place, I said, what do you want to do? Do you want to go to school with a mask on? And they both said, no. So, we have been homeschooling, which is going fabulously, and I asked them to please write a letter to the board letting you know how they feel about wearing masks, because they did have to wear it last year when they were in school. And I wanted to know, how do you feel about it? This is who we should be listening to, is the kids, right? And the parents are the ones speaking for the kids, so I'm going to read their letters, okay? I have a 10-year-old and a 13-year-old, and they've both written letters. 10-year-old says, "I felt like I was trapped. That broke my heart when I read that." She said, "I could not breathe, you cannot see your friends' faces, I hate the feeling of them, you shouldn't force them on our faces, they're gross." Leave it to a kid to be able to tell it like it actually is. 13-year-old says, "Why I hate masks," this is her title. "I honestly, absolutely hate masks, I can't breathe in these things, but I hate that I can't see my friends' faces, and I hate the fact that people were trying to force it on me. If someone told me, 'No more masks,' I would run around screaming in joy. Masks are so disgusting, I'd rather move away than have to wear a stupid face masks. Masks, make masks optional, public school is the worst." Sorry, I'm getting emotional about it, but you know what? It's been tough. I hate that my child thinks public school is the worst. That should say a lot to you. They've had some fantastic teachers over the years, I'm not going to deny that, there have been some wonderful teachers, but for this one thing to make my kids not want to be in public school, that says a lot about what they're doing to their mental and emotional health. Make masks optional. This should be up to the parents who know their children the best, know what they are dealing with, what their emotional health is, we should be the ones determining what they put on their faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirby Gardner?
Hi, Kirby Gardner, Mind Of You Circle. To start, the first thing lost with the use of a mask is a sight of a smile. Our children haven't consistently seen the faces of their peers in almost two years. Some of them have never seen their faces because they came from different elementary schools, like my son. Our children are at very low risk for death, hospitalization, and other adverse effects related to COVID. Meanwhile, our children are far more likely to suffer from mental health issues. There are, in fact, adverse effects related to masking, linguistic issues, emotional and social development. This should not be taken center stage, never mind the disruption of learning to that itself. I'd like to highlight some key points from a research article published in May 2021. Understanding emotions is crucial for social interaction. Interpreting other people's facial configurations is fundamental during social development when children learn to interact with others. While essential emotional processing is evident in infants, early childhood is considered a critical period for the development of understanding emotions and emotion processing. Continuous developmental changes do indeed occur from infancy to adulthood as the individual's social environment gradually grows in its capacity and complexity. I've heard and read about many behavioral challenges since our children have returned to school. I've also heard them say children are resilient over and over and over. How much longer are we going to listen to that and expect them to just keep being resilient? Look around at all the other districts giving parents and teachers a choice. Not one piece of data relative to the efficacy of masking has been presented here to the Board of Education. Not one fact, not one piece, not one number. The mask mandate is set to expire on the 28th, the Board of Alderman hopefully will rescind it tomorrow night at their meeting, God willing. At the last Board of Health meeting on February 9th, not one piece of scientific evidence was presented to support the continued use of masks within the community. There was not one statistical fact presented on the effectiveness of masking, nowhere is there one piece of data that show that the use of masks have helped slow or stopped the spread of COVID. There's been absolutely zero enforcement of masks here in Nashua since it was reinstated, so what are we doing? Go to any business, you can walk in without a mask, nobody cares. Newest guidance from the New Hampshire DOE states that K-12 schools are no longer required to report individual at-home COVID-positive cases, and schools are no longer, there is no longer need for schools to routinely report clusters back to the Department of Public Health. It's not an issue anymore. If you think that our children are properly putting on a mask and taking it off at school sanitarily, you're all sadly mistaken. They end up on the floor, tables, ground, and they put them right back on their face. It's really gross. At the most recent Board of Health meeting, Dr. Stephanie stated that the only two masks that are recommended for the use for protection from COVID is an N-95 and a KN-95, and those masks have a 95% filtration rate, not even 100%. So, imagine what this does, or a flimsy piece of cloth on your face. Some other statistics from the Board of Health meeting, there's been a 39% decrease in the number of daily cases reported, this is state data. There's been a consistent decrease in active cases since February 2nd, 43%. The week of February 1st to February 8th, there was a 37% decrease in the number of hospitalizations. Another Board of Health member stated at that same meeting, when Omicron came, it was like a rocket ship blasting off. He then went on to say that our cases have peaked, if you look at the graphs. So, if anybody knows data and infection rate, you look at the peak, we're never hitting that point again. The whole rate from the start of this pandemic.
Did you hear my alarm?
I'd like to leave you with this. The U.S. Surgeon General just said regarding COVID, "Our safety measures reduce risk, but they cannot eliminate risk, nothing can. This is not going away, it's time to give parents and teachers a choice to wear a mask. The mask protects the wearer and nobody else, just like Bobby Bagley just said. It only protects the person wearing it." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kim Silverman? Kim Silverman?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kim Silverman, and I live on Gilman Street in Nashua. My 10-year-old grandson lives with us, and he wrote a note that I emailed to the board last week. So, I wasn't sure if everybody got it because I wasn't sure if the distribution list was updated, because I noticed some of the addresses weren't the Nashua.edu address. So, do you know, for the new members, are you on the list yet, on the distribution?
They are, they're using their personal emails.
I'm sorry?
They're using their personal emails?
So, it's not on the DOE at Nashua?
So, the email's up to date.
Okay.
Are you speaking about masking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I got a little off, but...
That's okay.
I'm just going to read this note for my grandson, he's in fifth grade. "My name is Aiden, I am in fifth grade. It is hard for me to breathe when I wear a mask, it makes me tired all day. It is annoying when it falls down, I don't want to wear masks anymore." He would like to participate in the after-school program, I really don't want him to because he would just have to wear a mask for another hour or two in the day. Since everything started, I've learned so much about masks, you know, when COVID started, there were so many unknowns. And then, when it came time to vote on masking our kids, I know there was, I think, a letter from doctors, 20 doctors, that sent in to recommend them, I thought, wow, well, okay. But after doing a lot of research, I realized doctors are not experts in masking. They wear them, but they're not the experts. The experts are people like industrial hygienists, has nothing to do with dentists. It's a whole profession we don't hear a lot about. But if you think of OSHA, they have a lot of them. Dr. Mosley's new school district had a problem with mold at the beginning of the year, and they had a delayed opening, they had a firm come in, of industrial hygienists, to deal with that problem. And after it was abated, then they had to test the air quality. But that's what these people do, they protect us. They don't just say slap a mask on, because that's actually one of the last things they would tell you to do. The person I have really followed closely is an expert witness in court, he's testified in hundreds of cases, including the Monsanto Roundup case. His name is Stephen Petty, and I suggest you look him up, S.T.E.P.H.E.N.P.E.T.T.Y. He has some videos on YouTube and some on Rumble. He will take the CDC's recommendations and show you why they're not going to work. The COVID particle, when we first, when all of this first started, we thought it was just droplets, it's actually mostly aerosolized droplets. They're so tiny, if you see sunlight coming in your window and see the dust, the COVID particle is about 500 times smaller than that.
Can you hear my alarm? I'm sorry.
Oh, was that, did I go over?
Yeah, I mean, it's ringing now, but it's not coming off of my microphone, so...
Did I do my three minutes?
You did do your three minutes, but...
Lastly, please stop making our kids warriors for this, they are the least susceptible.
Thank you. So, it has been 15 minutes, I would be looking for a motion to extend public comment.
I'll move.
Hold on. Who gave me this piece of paper? Can I read on the back of it? I'll just cross it, is it okay, can I cross off? Do you have an extra piece? Can I steal it? Thank you. Okay, so, motion to extend. Another 15 minutes. Do I have a...
I'll second.
Who said it first?
Can I say something? If it's going to take more than 15 minutes, can we amend it just to say that everybody, that we'll get through the whole list so that we don't have to do this again?
So, I started off doing it every 15 minutes just because I was trying to, I mean, when we were talking at the end of last year, there were so many behavioral outbursts and disruptions that I felt like every 15 minutes we could reassess for how things were going, if things got a little too heated because people weren't listening, or they weren't following the recommendations for, you know, participating.
That's bad, thank you.
Sorry, I know it seems kind of childish, but it's worked, I think. So, can I, who's going to, Christina, you're going to say this first?
I'll second it.
No, I can't make my own motion? So, somebody has to make the motion?
I made the motion, I accept it, I made the motion.
Okay. Okay, so, we have to do roll call. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Okay, so another 15 minutes. And we have Meredith, student. And Meredith, what are you going to be speaking on? And you don't have to say your address because you're a student.
I'm going to be speaking on masks.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Meredith, and I'm a student at Elm Street Junior High. I'm asking you to please lift the mask mandate or consider mask optional approach for the school. Since the school year started, I've noticed that I can't breathe properly while wearing the masks, and when I am wearing it, I sweat a lot, which causes a wet mask. That wet mask is causing my acne to get worse, and I'm sure all you remember what it was like to be a teenager with acne problems, it's not fun. In addition to those listed above, you see, I also wear glasses, even with de-fogger, I still fog up. I've gotten both my vaccines, and I'm eligible for the booster in April. Maybe those who have been vaccinated could go mask-free, and those who haven't can be mask optional, that way, nobody is singled out. So, in closing, I again ask that you consider a mask option that parents feel are best for their kids. Please follow the footsteps of our neighboring towns and cities and lift the mandate immediately. Thank you for your time and listening to my opinion.
Thank you. Sarah Wessel? And Ms. Wessel, what will you be speaking on?
I'm speaking on masks as well. I'm here to ask you to vote to allow the school mask mandate to timeout with the city mandate. We've done our due diligence in our mitigation tactics, numbers are down, and the masses are ready to move on. I've spoken here many times and always had the same theme, let's make Nashua a city that leads from the front instead of always being behind. Every town around us is giving teachers and students the options to choose for themselves, even in Massachusetts. Red or blue counties, it does not matter, the masks are coming off because it's time. Mental health risks are at an all-time high, students and teachers alike need to see smiles. The human connection of smiling can change someone's whole day, it can let them know that they matter and someone else cares. Our children and teachers are missing out on this unnecessarily. I have some doctors here, I'm hoping, I'm not going to butcher their names, but Dr. Amish Adalja, a senior scholar at Johns Hopkins University Center for Health Security, said, and I quote, "One-way masking works." Dr. Karan, an infectious disease doctor at Stanford, said the same exact thing, "One-way masking works." Dr. Duran, an epidemiologist and director of antimicrobial stewardship at Toph's Medical Center, said, "We have reached the point in the pandemic where it's become unsustainable to depend on others for protection. Luckily, if you want to avoid COVID at all costs, you don't have to rely on anyone else's mask compliance. In other words, one-way masking is completely acceptable. With all of this updated data, there's absolutely zero reason to extend it any further, there's no need to extend it past February vacation, we do not need to go into March, the science and the data has changed, what was necessary in November is no longer needed today. The facts and the data are there. If you choose to not let it timeout with the city, you are literally ignoring the latest up-to-date information that is right in front of you, and putting your concerns about staffing over your concerns for your students. Please be proactive for our children and do not leave Nashua behind again." One other thing that I'll say is, I have a child in the district, she has a medical exemption, has had it since the beginning, it has been denied, and when you go above what the doctors have told you to do for a child, you are essentially practicing medicine without a license. That's a lawsuit waiting to happen, so I would really reconsider where we're at and allow the mask mandate to timeout. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Wayne Giorgiana? And Wayne, are you speaking on masking as well?
Yes. I guess the thing that confuses me is, I'm Wayne Giorgiana, by the way. The thing that confuses me is that Mrs. Bagley stood up here and provided all this information, but what she failed to provide was the number of kids that died in Nashua from not wearing a mask. So, I guess I'm just really confused by the fact that masks, that kids aren't dying, so why are they still in masks? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Lisa Bell, sorry, what does that say? Lisa Belling, Ballinger?
It's Ballinger.
Ballinger. Thank you. Are you speaking on masking?
Mostly masking, but actually, I do have a bit at the end with regard to teacher contract.
Okay.
Thank you, can you hear me through the mask? Okay, so, on today's email, we had 44 students out of 11,000 with COVID, so that, and of the two largest schools, 10 in each high school. So that, and of the two largest schools, 10 in each high school, or less than 10 in each high school. So it sounds like it is time to make those masks optional. I sent an email to the board, and I don't know if the board didn't get it. One of the things that I thought, you know, there's been a lot of complaints about drama at these meetings and the parents being here and calling the police and whatnot. In order to remove the drama altogether, you can just follow what the city says and have that be your rule moving forward. And then you can eliminate a whole bunch of this drama moving forward. There's no reason to treat students, staff, or teachers any differently than we treat our residents in New Hampshire or in Nashua. And then with regard to teachers, as a Board of Ed, you should stop treating our teachers like they're an enemy. We're all a team together, parents, teachers, and the Board of Ed. I think it's appropriate for you to approve a contract without removing language that's been in all the prior contracts. They should have a contract, and they shouldn't have to accept reduced representation. Think about it, like the legislation in Congress. We don't have just a congressman for one year. We don't have a senator just for one year because there is learning to the job. So you're wanting to have their representation reduced to only single-year terms and things like that isn't very efficient and would actually probably cause more issues moving forward. That's essentially it. So let's, let's give the staff and our students and teachers the option to learn mask-free. And let's acknowledge the fact that although traditionally kids can't cover their faces, cover their heads in schools, that used to be a reason for suspension. Allow those other students who wish to be masked to be able to continue to do so. Could be a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
What are you speaking on? Teacher's contract.
Okay.
Natalie Laflame, Nashua taxpayer, parent, and Nashua teacher, but not a domestic terrorist. I'm here once again to urge you to settle the teacher's contract. At the last meeting, one of the members of the board's negotiating team lectured us on why she changed her mind about the financial aspects that had been settled at the January 6 negotiations meeting. She mentioned her concern about the future financial sustainability of that contract. She referenced previous contracts that resulted in staff cuts later on. To that, I have two things to say. First, we are in different times now. We are looking at a teacher shortage that is just going to get worse. You should be trying to retain the teachers you have now with a fair and good contract. Secondly, why are you negotiating for people that are not even employees here yet? We are here now, and you're, and we've been with your children these past two years of the pandemic. We need a contract. Please settle this contract for your current teachers. Don't you think it's about time that happened? Thank you.
Thank you. Hunter, you're a student, so you don't have to put your address down, and you didn't. Thank you. What are you going to be speaking on?
Masks.
Okay.
I would also like to mention that I'm speaking on behalf of all the other students who are with me, and it looks like the fourth row.
Thank you.
So I know a couple of people have come up here, and members of the board have mentioned that the Board of Aldermen will be rescinding their mask mandate tomorrow. If you just look, we have a couple of aldermen who are present. I know more of them were present earlier. Every time that topic, that point was brought up, they were shaking their heads. And so I don't know why we continue to recite that misinformation, because that's what it is, it's false information, when we literally have members of the Board of Aldermen who are sitting here and telling them that it was false. And I'd also like to mention, one person said that Ms. Bagley said that masks only protect yourself. That's not what she said. If you were listening to what she said, you would have heard that she mentioned that masks protect the wearer and also other people. And I would like to mention further that the CDC still recommends further universal masking in schools. We've heard Bobby Bagley say that she, that they and the National Public Health recommends that we continue to do all we can to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. That includes wearing masks. And I also like to say that the plan that was brought up and recommended by administration that came up, it's a very comprehensive plan, but I fear that it flip-flops too much. I know I can hardly remember what day it is, let alone, is this a masking week? Is this not? And also, at every mask discussion, we hear teachers, not teachers, I apologize. We hear people come up and say that, what about disabled students who are forced to wear a mask? We're using our disabled students as puppets. I can speak on, as, on my personal experience, that when you see that disabled students are not being forced to wear a mask if their disability requires them to not wear a mask. Teachers are not forcing our disabled students to wear a mask. And also, current, cases are currently diminishing because of our mask mandate. They've just begun to diminish. Now is not the time to lift our mask mandate. Two weeks, one month of the cases going down is not enough data to show that we should be lifting our mask mandate. One parent mentioned standing up for our children. Standing up for our children and our teachers means caring about their safety and continuing to require that everyone wears a mask. Everyone wears a mask. Another parent mentioned that kids aren't dying, so why should we be wearing masks? Do we, do kids really need to be dying in order for us to look and protect them? We don't like masks. I don't like, I don't go wake up every morning like, oh, can't wait to wear my mask. But I do it because I know that it protects myself and other people and students who may be immunocompromised or students who go home to people with immuno, who are immunocompromised. Thank you.
Thank you. I just need another motion to go another 15 minutes.
So moved.
Does anyone want a second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion to extend public comments, another 15 minutes. Darling?
That kids aren't dying, so why should we be wearing masks?
Neil, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
He's just, he's on a delay, so we're hearing the TV behind him. He's participating. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond? Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Okay. Patricia Duffett? What are you going to be speaking on?
Contract.
Contract, okay.
Hi, good evening. Patricia Duffett, first grade teacher at Maine Dunstable. First, Mr. Porter, I think you're amazing. Thank you for coming, meeting after meeting, and thank you for being a voice for all of us. Your words are appreciated, so thank you. And to the board, thank you for reminding us how important it is to have a strong union and union representation. Our last contract was four years. I think teachers generally become kind of complacent in the middle of that. Years two and three, things are smooth sailing. We head into year four, contact negotiation time. We all understand that this is a unique situation. COVID hit around the same times that negotiations were probably due to start, and then things, you know, were pushed off on the back burner. But what's gone on the last few months has really reminded us the importance of having a strong leader, the importance of solidarity, the importance of sticking together. So thank you for making us remember why we stick together. Please pass this contract. This has gone on long enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Shon V. Buckwell?
She left.
She left? Lori Ordolano? What are you speaking on, Ms. Ordolano? Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'd like to ask the board to end this mandate as of now. I think it's time to be done with this. You know, I'm really concerned by what I hear from Bobby Bagley in the, in her presentation from the Department of Health. I think there's a lack of information in what's going on here within the city that should be used to weigh whether these kids need to be masked in school. She talks about keeping kids safe. This pandemic was never about kids and their safety. They weren't the ones affected. It was about older adults, and vaccination for those older adults was important. For children, we're not seeing that, and masking is just not the case. You know, it's very disturbing to see how much energy is going into this topic for parents who want choice and want to be a part of their kid's education. I think you've missed it. And you parents who want educational choice and want to be involved in these types of decisions, not just with masking, but with how meetings are run, with volunteerism in the school, which has been shut down because of COVID, you have to leave this school district. This is not the place for you. You will never have this here. These masks are going to stay for a very long time, sadly. I homeschooled, my husband and I homeschooled our two children from 1997 to 2014, 2014. Really, it worked beautifully. For older kids in high school, you have community college, they're blowing the mask mandate out on the 28th, and they said, no matter what the city does, they're done. I spoke to them over there. You know, you have great programs. I, I feel like we have completely mismanaged this. You know, Bobby Bagley said we brought masks into Nashua because we were going up to a peak in, in COVID with Omicron. We actually put the mask mandate in when we were coming down. Our peak hospitalization was 472. We put the mandate in when it was 430, and we wrote it down. The Board of Health missed the peak. They missed the broadside of the barn. And I don't understand how one city masking made the difference in the state data when a dozen cities around us and towns aren't doing it. We listened to a great presentation by your Led Street principal about brains. Brains want voice and choice. Yes, I think it's time you give parents and students a choice on masking. Brains want to know why. You know what? With our Board of Health, our Health Department, we're not getting the whys. What we're getting, and we're not getting the answers and the real data. We're getting because I told you so, and that doesn't count. And we've learned, according to your Led Street principal, that brains are no longer just visual, auditory, and kinesthetic learning types of brains, that they adapt based on whatever the situation is. And that's because we've learned new things, and we're accepting new studies and new research. I think we've learned a lot about masks in two years of the pandemic. And what it has shown is, yes, masks are effective, but the percentage of the effectiveness is so low, it's not worth putting them on the kids, and it's taken so much away from their learning and development. I think we totally missed the wrong side of the, the broadside of the barn here. And really, parents, you got to get your kids out of this district. Thank you. Okay. So next up, we have Danielle Dion. I'm noticing that we do have some unmasked people, so if I didn't get to check everybody's medical papers, but if you could just maintain distance from other people who are wearing a mask, that would be fantastic. Next up is Danielle Dion.
Four after this. Hi. Good evening. I'm Danielle Dion from 10 Clydesdale Circle.
What are you going to be speaking on?
Masks.
Okay.
We can argue all night if masks work or don't work, but we can't argue this. The pandemic has taken a toll on the students. Why is every therapist in the local area have a waiting list up to three to four months? Why does the high school guidance have their highest numbers of students with depression and anxiety? Why are children's speech delays tripled? Why is the teacher burnout at its all-time high? Why do some teachers feel a lack of connection with some students because they can't read or see their facial expressions? Why can my son sit at lunch with his friends not masked, but then 10 minutes later, sit in the same classroom with those same students and then have to wear a mask? The truth is, we could argue about this all night. You have your side, I have my side. We could go back and forth. We've done this for quite some time on different issues. So that's why I'm asking for choice. The choice for me to choose what's best for my child and the choice for you to choose what's best for your child, and then for us both to respect each other's choice and move forward and concentrate on educating our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Reyna? Guys, come on. Reyna? What does that say, hon? I just, I can't read your writing as all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you going to talk on GPA?
Going to speak on the GPA on the next.
On the special meeting? Okay. And students, you don't have to write your addresses down here because it's all protected information, so I'll make sure that gets crossed out. Sritham? Okay. Thank you. Pradeepi?
Same thing.
Same thing. And is Shon V.? She went, okay. All right, guys, I will make a note of that. GPA, no talking. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our first public comment. Thank you all for bearing with us. I appreciate it. Next up, we have superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Three things for this evening. First, I'm honored to announce the graduation exercises for the class of 2022 will take place at Stelo Stadium this year on the following dates. South will be on Monday, June 13 at 7:00 p.m., and North will be Tuesday, June 14 at 7:00 p.m. We've also scheduled rain dates for June 15 and 16 if needed, but fingers crossed for good weather. This is one of the most important days of the year, so we're looking forward to welcoming families and joining us to honor the class of 2022. More great news for the class of 2022. I'm honored to announce that 16 seniors were named National Merit Scholarship finalists. Remarkably, each of the 16 semifinalists from last fall moved forward and were named finalists. And we can't remember a time when this happened before. The College Board, is my time on?
Yep. Wrap it up, Doc.
Okay, I'm working on it. The College Board made the announcement recently about this prestigious honor for these students, which reflects so positively not only on the academic success of each student, but also on our staff at both high schools. So thank you, teachers at North and South. Actually, teachers across the district. Thank you. Our 16 finalists are among a talented pool, about 16,000 finalists across the nation, who are selected among more than 1.5 million students who took the PSAT last year. So this is quite an honor. I wish them all well in the final scholarship process, and again, congratulations. And one more bit of great news for our high schools. Anthony Fernandez, South class of 2023, won the NHIA championship in wrestling in the 132-pound class. Anthony pinned his opponent in only 1 minute and 42 seconds at the meet on Saturday, so congratulations, Anthony. Thank you, that's all.
Fantastic. Now, as the board's response to the superintendent's comments, I will just go around the room. Ms. Darling?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Lamphier?
I just want to say congratulations to the, all those students that did so well on the National Merit Scholarship program, and also to the, to the boy who won in wrestling. It was a great, great job.
Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to say congratulations to our students, the wrestling student, and thank you to the teachers that helped make this possible for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey? Is that your comment?
That's all, that's all she wrote.
That's all she wrote?
Very awesome.
My favorite kind of comments. Ms. Gilio?
I would like to also congratulate all of the students, and I'm sure that I may not be the only one that was busy watching the Granite State Challenge this weekend, but special congratulations to our team from South who did an amazing job. I can't wait to see them in the next round. Good job, everyone and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I skipped over Ms. Raymond. Sorry, Ms. Raymond?
That's fine, no comment.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Everyone else already said all the great things, so thank you.
Ms. Seem?
No comment.
Okay. I also want to just congratulate those students and the teachers and the kiddos representing the Granite State, well, it was the Granite State, what is it?
Challenge.
Challenge. Right. Do I have a? Wasn't Mr. Claffey one of the leaders on that a while ago?
Not this year, Steve.
Not this year? Okay. Well, thank you.
Next up is our student members of the Board comments. You guys can duke out who goes first.
All right, I'll go first. To start off, I'd like to say congratulations to the North varsity basketball for finishing the season, ranking fourth in Division One with a close win against Exeter of 57-54. But I would also like to speak on the issue of masking in schools. To start off, no matter how confusing the data can seem, I think it's important that we all recognize masks as an effective measure of personal protective equipment, and we continue to wear them until further notice. I understand we are exiting a spike in reported cases, or exiting a spike in reported cases, but it's important we don't act early on removing preventative measures, as, you know, governments have done before. As for our students in the high school, the majority of students don't seem to have a problem with wearing a mask, and if needed, a reminder, almost all are complicit. One recommendation I do have for the Board is to discuss alternatives for our younger children in elementary, who are learning social skills as well as how to speak and write. Many parents, especially of Title I schools, can't always find the time or are equipped with the right skills to teach or aid in teaching their children themselves. And masks can create a roadblock of development and understanding such things. I've spoken with a family with a daughter in kindergarten at Charlotte Ave, and even with what I'd recognize as a great effort from them, they're worried of their daughter falling behind compared to others. I'd also like to say I find it sort of redundant when we have people coming up with examples of neighboring districts ending their mask mandate, because Nashville is its own self and is unlike any of the district's examples you all bring up, not only to its increased size, but its culture. Nashville is an economic powerhouse for the state of New Hampshire, and this drives in and encourages people from all over the area, including Massachusetts, to visit. And therefore, just because Nashville seems to be doing okay does not mean it always will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sahu?
Thank you. But I hate to be redundant, because Dr. McKinney always seems to seal some of my remarks. But big congratulations to Anthony Fernandez on his well-deserved win, as well as our fantastic Granite State Challenge team, although they may have left, the coach for the team wasn't in the audience earlier on in the evening. And as well as all of my peers who have advanced to the great prestige of National Merit finalists, it is really hard, and it, these students have separated themselves from the rest of the pack, and, you know, I'm just so proud of them. So, going, moving on to the topic of masks, I'd like to say I believe in the science of masks and that, if worn properly, they do work. I encouraged the Board to follow the proposal, which was stated earlier by Dr. McKinney, for specifically high schoolers. And I just like, wanted to mention that even if we decide to not force our students to wear masks and give the parents choice, we still do not have a policy to maintain the continuity of students' learning while they do have COVID. Please remember that not every student who tests positive for COVID displays symptoms for five or less days. They can have symptoms for much longer, and that is detrimental to their academic success. But regardless of tonight's decision on that, I trust the Board to make a decision on behalf of the safety of staff, students, and especially those who are immunocompromised. And I know that we did table the topic of class rank in the task force to a special meeting, but I still have some remarks planned on that, so I'd like to speak for that. So, when I ran to be my school's student representative, I made a promise to stand by the will of my student body, especially on the issue of class rank. And tonight, and in this special meeting, I implored the Board to get rid of our current ranking system, beginning with the class of 2023. The majority of students who are aware of this issue strongly agree that implementing this policy with the task force's recommendation of the class of 2026 is too late. The task force has acknowledged that the ranks have negative effects on the student body, so why are we keeping rank for the next four years? Think about COVID's effects on GPA and rank. Over the past few years, ranks have been less representative of students' academic ability because of unequal economic circumstances. Students have not had equal access to technology required for learning. Families at home had maybe one Chromebook over remote learning. Siblings had to share Chromebooks. Students missed school hours due to lack of resources. Students weren't able to complete tests or assignments on time because they didn't have stable Wi-Fi connection. This harms their grades in GPA, and it puts them in a disadvantage when it comes to rank. Students have not been able to prioritize their education in the way that they would have been able to with access to these resources. Lack of access to learning materials does not reflect a student's drive to learn. Depression rates has risen over remote learning, and students were not well enough to prioritize their grades. Access to mental health resources were scarce, while the demand was higher than ever. So many couldn't get the help that they needed to get better. As we know, depression can be physical, environmental, and has emotional causes as well, whether it be serotonin imbalances in the brain or the death of a family member. Medical professionals aim to help patients in whatever the way they can. But with the environmental and situational causes of increased isolation and less access to resources, the mental health impacts of COVID have no quick fix. And as a community, we agreed on a social contract of remoteness, where we could continue on with life in whatever way we could. We were surviving, not thriving. And school was part of this, too. Students had to make a choice of prioritization, of improving their mental health or chugging on, doing whatever they could to preserve their pre-pandemic performance in a world falling apart. How do we balance this? How are we going to balance seeing that the world is shut down while we had to carry on? Seeing grades drop may have fed into these depressing thoughts. I was one of those students, and seeing my grades drop scared me. It made me feel even worse about myself, but motivation was so low that it was something I didn't have much control over. I know that all of you Board members do care about students' mental health issues, especially Mr. Claffey. He was my economics teacher in March 2020, and I know that fantastic teachers and staff in the district, they tried their best for our students, but there's only so much that they can do. I among students faced the struggle. Mental health states come and go, but my AP MACRA grade is forever. While academic dishonesty has always been one of the main drivers in the argument to get rid of class rank, COVID has exacerbated this. Students cheated during remote learning, which has permanently messed up the ranks. You've got one type of student who'll stay honest even when they're given ample opportunity to cheat, and then you're going to have another student who's going to take advantage of these circumstances. Who do you think is going to get the better grades? And who do you think is actually going to be prepared to learn in the classes? Must I mention that current juniors and seniors were forced to make a decision to go pass/fail in, what, maybe two weeks? This had long-term effects on our GPAs and ranks, and students were given no option to appeal these last-second decisions. These irreversible decisions may not have been a reflection of their school performance at the time, but rather a reflection of their family, financial, and mental health situations. The task force brings up the point that the current class of students has been promised a rank and their current GPA scale, which is the reason for implementing the recommendations beginning with 2026. But what the task force has forgotten to mention is that students weren't promised a pandemic. This pandemic has had permanent effects on our GPA, and we should acknowledge that those old promises were not made during a global pandemic, not to mention that the pandemic isn't actually over. We still have the masks on, and life isn't back to pre-March 2020, no matter how much we try to pretend it is. We, as a Board, claim to follow the Nashville School District's values, and I got this directly from the site, so if any of you guys after want to search it up. But the Nashville, but I quote, "The Nashville School District values a passion for learning and the importance of integrity, trust, respect, empathy, and tenacity. The class rank system fosters the complete opposite of all of that. It is beyond me that we are still keeping it for another four years. If a district only rewards high academic achievement at whatever cost, how does this foster a passion for learning? If the district only rewards you if you take AP classes and not art, music, or other unweighted classes, how does this foster a passion for learning? How does any of this foster integrity, trust, respect, empathy, tenacity, when students are just taking classes because it helps their administration-designated number, one which won't affect them beyond the graduation rehearsal floor?" Don't worry, guys, I'm almost done. So I'm just going to end this by asking you some questions. Which student group are you going to side with? The top 10 or 20 students, who are the only ones who seem to be benefiting from maintaining the system for another four more years? Or the rest of the student body, which includes those who are struggling with their mental health, those who are struggling financially, those who felt abandoned by this district during the past year of remote learning? I would argue that even my fellow members of the top 10 or 20 aren't really benefiting. They're stressed, they're anxious, and they're doing it all for the sake of a number. What makes this worth it? Is it even worth it? Or does the school care about the numbers and the AP enrollment, all at the expense of students' mental health? It's the district's responsibility to live up to their mission statement. Thank you.
Thank you. I love hearing these students talk. I mean, we're doing something right. You guys are very smart. Thank you. So now, we have Committee on Budget, which starts March 9th. So we have no updates on that, but I will turn it over to Ms. Johnson regarding the Committee on Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. I recommend that the Board approve the contract with ESS Northeast LLC to approve the substitute services for the Nashville School District. Second?
That was Ms. Brown? Okay. I take notes a lot differently than Heather does, and it's a lot messier. So on the motion to approve the contract with ESS Northeast, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Okay. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
So she had to hang up. I think we can go on without finance. I'll call her back in one second. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Yes, sorry. Okay, so that was 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 1, and then Heather is absent.
We've got one more.
Can you, can you hold on one second while I call her back in?
Absolutely, because we need her for policy.
Getting close to needing my snack.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, you're back.
Sorry about that.
You missed out on the approval of the ESS contract, but it passed. So, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I recommend to approve the Nashville School District to enter into an agreement with Freedom Logistics LLC par the contract presented. Second?
On the motion to approve the Nashville School District entering into an agreement with Freedom Logistics, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Passes unanimously. That is it for finance. Ms. Raymond, were you going to present on policy, or was somebody else going to?
No, I had asked Ms. Darling if she would be able to do it in my absence.
Are you okay with that?
Actually, if I could pass it along, that would be appreciated.
Who else is on the policy committee?
I am.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. I don't mind reading through these.
If I may ask Ms. Raymond a question here?
Yeah.
Ms. Raymond?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. There was a couple policies that we needed amended, again, corrected, and one was being sent back regarding, I've got my notes here, and I was watching it today. Let's see. It had to do with employment of relatives or persons with romantic, personal relationships. I think that was the one that we were, had to send back.
Yes. I believe you're, no.
It was a substitute?
Yes, I believe you're right. I think you had questions, and we wrote them down, and Mr. Anthony was going to bring them to Ms. Carey.
Right, and we didn't get any updates in the packet on that one.
No, I would imagine that we wouldn't until the next policy.
Okay, I just want to make sure because, and then we also had, I've got to pull that one out. That was with the substitute teachers I just said, right? The romantic relations. There's so much in these pages here. Okay, let me just pull that one out. Also, on the first one, that was 2212, it was being rescinded for IMD, that we were asking Ms. Consella to rewrite.
Yes.
That didn't come through either.
Okay, then I would ask to withdraw that back to policy.
Okay.
I'm not sure why the, I'm not sure why the changes didn't happen the way that we had wanted, so if there's any issues with that, then they need to go back to policy and be fixed.
Okay, I think that was the only one, and let me see, that was 2212, no, that was the first one. And the substitute teacher one, which was 8227, were we making a change on that one, too? I believe? Yes.
Honestly, Ms. Johnson, I gave my notes to Mr. Parker, so I don't have the changes
Okay.
Because I knew I wouldn't be here, so I gave them to Mr. Parker to give to Ms. Consella.
I think that one, we were letting go because of the fact that in 20 days, they would have to be certified. Okay, so that one's okay to go. Okay, I think I got it straight now.
Okay.
Okay, that's a lot.
You're the big boss.
I know. Okay. Policy, 2212, I think we're going to...
Wait, so we're not going to do 1A or IA first? It's on the first part of the page.
I've got many pages.
That was the one to get rid of the word senior.
Right, okay.
In elementary, middle, and it said senior high school. It should have just said high school.
I might need to see that again.
It used to be senior high school, because we had junior high school.
Going back and forth. No.
I'm a good date.
Okay, policy, 2120.
Are we skipping 1A or IA?
See, I don't have it.
So we have to approve IA first and then rescind 2120.
It's just the last one in front of the agenda. It's easy to overlook.
I've got to find the agenda.
Do you want to use, here?
Let me use yours. We should have rehearsed this before.
We did. Just kidding.
You know what? I can make the motions if that's easier. I have it right in front of me.
You have it in front of you?
I do. All right, so the first motion is to approve policy IA, grade level organization as presented.
Okay, is anybody going to second that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, on the motion to approve policy IA, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. So it passes 9-0.
Okay, so on that, I'd like to move to rescind policy 2120, grade level organization, as we've just replaced it with IA.
I'll second.
Just apologizing to Gabby now for my handwriting. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?[1620.24] Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Okay, motion passes.
Okay, I would like to pull IMAB and also... I'm sorry, I apologize. IMDA and 2212 back to policy.
Okay.
And then on that, I would like to approve policy IMAB, teachers teaching their own children as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, on the motion to approve policy IMAB, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0.
I move to rescind policy 8220.1, teachers teaching their own children, as we've just approved the replacement.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. On the motion to rescind policy 8220.0, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. Next one is policy CGC. Is that being pulled? Was that one of the ones being pulled?
No, I would like to move to approve policy CGC, substitute teachers. And then if Mr. Donovan has some changes in the future, we can do that at that time.
Okay. What? I'm sorry, Heather, I missed the last part of what you said.
Oh, it said if Mr. Donovan has some changes that will need to be made as a result of the contract with ESS, he can let us know and we can fix it. But as of right now, my understanding is that the amendments to CGC are sufficient.
I haven't read that policy, so...
Okay.
Okay. Would you like us to pull it back to policy to give you a chance to read it before we make a change right now?
If you'd like me to, I could.
Just quickly, what does he need to be reviewing?
I'm not sure how the approval of the contract with ESS Northeast works with this particular policy.
Ah, okay.
I just don't know, so...
Like the workings of the ESS overlap with this or undermine or contradict? So we need to balance it off? Then yeah, why don't we pull it back and let them review it? And then we can make the policy based on what the contract is.
Policy wasn't sure if finance would be done with that contract by today. Okay, so moving on, I move to approve policy EBBB, accident report as presented.
Second. Is that you, Jessica?
Yep.
Okay, on the motion to approve policy EBB, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. One more policy, guys.
I move to rescind policy EBB-R, which is the attachment entitled Bureau of Emergency Medical Services.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second. That's me.
Okay. On the policy to rescind policy EBB-R, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Okay, next up is the Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
I move to approve the contracts in the amounts of $21,000 for Ramapo and $22,000 for BERC to be funded from the CSI funds.
Second. Okay, on the motion to approve contracts with Ramapo and BERC, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
No, okay. And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 8-1.
I move to approve the contract with Impact Coaching Partners in the amount of $31,400 to be paid for with Esser and Title II funds.
Second. Okay, on the motion to approve the contract with Impact Coaching, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0.
I move to approve the contract with the Achievement Network in the amount of $14,500 to be paid for by Esser funds.
Second. Okay, on the motion to approve the contract with Achievement Network, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0.
And finally, I move to approve the contract with Jessica Minahan in the amount of $12,600 to be paid for by Title II funds.
Second. Okay, on the motion to approve the contract with Jessica Minahan, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. Committee on Human Resources, can I first get a motion to amend the rules?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh-oh, ladies. Okay, on the motion to amend the rules for HR Committee, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. Go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
Hi, we met earlier this evening. There were two of us in attendance, and it was a very brief meeting, and we motioned to approve the personnel recommendations dated February 21st, 2022.
Second. Okay, on the motion to approve the personnel recommendations dated 2/21/2022, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. Do we have any liaison reports? We don't... I don't think we have our JSSBC meeting this week, so we have no updates. It's next week. Okay. That makes me incredibly happy. I'll update my calendar after. Okay, so we already went over... What?
May I ask something?
Yes, go ahead.
It's not a question, it's a request. I would just like to request respectfully the board members, when they vote no, if I voted yes, I ask myself, do they know something I don't know? So I would respectfully ask if they can quickly make a statement when they do that as to whether there's some glaring mistake that we should be aware of, so that we're... I mean, we all make mistakes, but I just always wonder if there's something I missed. So it would be wonderful if they would share with us, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I voted no because I was at the curriculum meeting, and I didn't like some of the language in one of the proposals, so I just voted no on it. I mean, I guess we don't always have to give our reasons why I... and my feelings were, don't vote for it. So, but it was just something in the language in there, and I brought it... if you go to the curriculum meeting, you'll see what I brought up that I didn't like in the language. Thank you.
Well, and it wasn't just you, Mrs. Johnson. I'm just saying that you listen and you say, oh, did I miss something? And if it's something that you think's valuable, if it's something that you know it was just a... then I understand what you're saying. So I just think it would be wonderful if you could all teach me a little something. I have a lot to learn. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Seem, I do normally ask for discussion after each of the... after each of the things, but I didn't this time because I figured we probably hash stuff out in committees, but I can bring that back into practice if that's helpful.
Thank you.
So we can have more of a discussion on it. So we have already addressed GPA and class rank. Next up is masking. So we would be... the motion...
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah, Ms. Raymond?
Oh, I'm sorry. I might have jumped the gun here. I wanted to know if I could make a motion on masking.
So we're looking to make a motion to recommend the National Board of Education approve the health and safety measures listed above and revise the reopening plan accordingly.
Yes.
Can you repeat that? I didn't... this telephone sometimes muffles it.
That's okay. The recommendation is that the National Board of Education approve the health and safety measures listed above and revise the reopening plan accordingly. This is in reference to the memo that Dr. McKinney sent out with the six points that he visited earlier when we were talking about masking.
Yeah, so I would like to motion that we continue to follow public health, continue to follow the federal guidelines regarding masks on buses, and all of those six points made in that memo, verbatim.
I... can I just... Dr. McKinney read it earlier, but I didn't write down perfectly.
Can I second that?
I'm just reading the last sentence on there.
Does it need a second?
Yeah, but I... this is the problem with me having two hats on, is I'm writing, so you guys have to just take a pause for one second.
So are we saying that this means that the children will continue masking into March?
Until March 21st.
Yes, until 21st.
So can I speak? I don't want to speak out of turn, and I don't know what turn is being on this phone.
Nope, I will... I'm going to ask for any follow-up discussion that we haven't already had, in just one second. Okay, hopefully in that quick second, you guys were able to make your comments and questions concise. Ms. Seem?
Wait a second, you didn't do it. Did you get a second?
No, can I have a second?
Are you telling me it's my turn to speak?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lampier seconded.
Yep, thank you. Now, Ms. Seem, you can go.
I will not be voting for this. I think that keeping them... I agree with Mrs. Darling, I think it was, who said, why is this... if the city is going to stop doing it, why is the school going to continue doing it? And if it turns out that our figures start to go the wrong way, we can certainly revisit it, but to say that we're going to wait that long, I guess at this point, I just don't think it's necessary. So in fact, I don't think... and when I think of the young kids, I had a teacher tell me that with the young kids, their masks are constantly falling down anyway, and you know, how many kids can you follow and say, pull your mask up, pull your mask up? It's just... I believe it has become a real heartache, and I wish there were an easy answer, but in this case, I will not vote for this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Brown, I had a hand up first.
With what Ms. Seem had in mind, I agree wholeheartedly. It doesn't seem fair to put the burden of masking on our children when we are not expecting it from the adults in the community. So I would like to move to amend the motion to edit number five, to have masks be recommended... masks become optional or recommended on February 28th, as the city mandate ends.
February 28th, right?
Correct, February 28th.
I second that.
Okay, so first we have to vote on the amendment, and then we'll have to go back to the original. Ms. Johnson, did you have something that you wanted to say in regards to the amendment?
No, after the amendment. After we vote on the amendment.
Can I speak on the amendment, please?
What, Ms. Raymond?
I would like to speak on the amendment.
Okay.
Just very briefly, I would ask that the board think carefully about changing the recommendations of our public health and in regards to masks in light of the unchanged CDC recommendations, and the fact that our responsibility under the city charter is to ensure the public health and safety of our students first.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything in opposition to what Ms. Raymond said?
Actually, in... kind of in line with what Ms. Raymond said, should the amendment actually be to have our policy... our motion line up with the city's motion? So if they were to, say, extend it past the 28th, we would follow suit. If they were to end it early, we would follow suit.
Well, I think right now, it's the 20... it does follow... this amendment does follow what the city's policy is, or the city's motion is, whatever.
Can I say something now?
Yeah.
Okay. It was mentioned here that the board... that there's some aldermen in the audience, and it has nothing... they're not rescinding. There is 0220-22-006, and I was hoping to be able to go tomorrow night and speak on that. I might not be able to attend tomorrow night because I am tired of being told what I can and cannot do in this city, and I'm the one who has to walk around with the note because of number six on the ordinance. It's rescinding the face covering ordinance prior to February 28th, 2022, endorsed by Alderman at Large Melbourne Moran Jr. So he's the one who wrote the legislation, the ordinance. So there is something coming before the Board of Aldermen tomorrow night. Also, again, I'm listening to all this, the Board of Health did not do any recommendations, and they work with Bobby Bagley, and they did not recommend masks anymore. That's why there is an ordinance coming before the Board of Aldermen tomorrow to rescind this. So when we're talking about this, let's be clear, I sat in that Board of Health meeting on Zoom, and there was no more recommendations for masks. It is about time that come the 28th, our kids will be on vacation, we line it up with the city, we line it up no matter what, that these masks become optional for these kids. Didn't we listen to these parents? Do parents have no choice anymore? No, they don't. Parents are not allowed to have any choice or do anything for their kids anymore. This is what it comes down to. So it is... I looked it up on my phone during the meeting, and I took a picture of it, and we know that the ordinance is coming in tomorrow night. So if there's a member of the Board of Aldermen here that disagrees with me, that's on their agenda tomorrow night, and I even printed it because I want to be there tomorrow night, please dispute with me, but I don't think we're going to, because it's right here. So people, when you talk about things, make sure you do your homework before you start talking about... the board isn't looking to rescind it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Brown?
Actually, it's kind of in response to Heather. I agree that the health and safety of our kids and our teachers is paramount, and I think that also, when we're talking about the city charter and our duty as board members, is to factor in the high rates of anxiety and depression that we're seeing right now and have been seeing for an extended amount of time. The rates of girls who are self-harming has increased by 56%. The increase rate of boys with eating disorders has increased 26%. It's things that we're not seeing... we've never seen before. And I think... and I do actually agree with the parent who got up here and the teachers have said it as well, that we're adding one more thing into the pile of things that teachers are dealing with that is kind of post-pandemic traumatic behavior that we're seeing in the classrooms, that the kids are... the behavior is escalating. They're not having the support that they need and deserve for behavioral consequences, but I think those consequences are needed to put in action because they're traumatized by these other things that we're still demanding of them, which is well above their developmental stage that we should expect. You know, last year, two years ago, it feels... the timeline is strange. We had the kids in a year of isolation in order to protect the adults, and then vaccinations became available, and we still kept them at home, probably a little bit longer than we needed to. And then we put the masks on them, and now we're seeing the numbers tip down, and we have vaccinations available for anyone who wants them. We have good quality medical devices available to anyone who needs them. And I think that it's time to also start de-escalating the fear of the people that... there's going to be a transition period, also the fear of taking the mask off for some kids and families. So you know what? If we can ease this in a little bit and start transitioning to a time where people can start taking responsibility and have... for their own bodies and their own health, I think it's important. I mean, the wording is still in here, strongly recommended. The families who need to be protected more strictly is good, but it also gives the options for people to take the different degree of risk for their own household. If the amount of anxiety outweighs the protection from the masks, they deserve that choice. So I do think that that is part of the reason... that choice. Um, so I do think that that is part of the reason we need to do this also, um, just in response to staying in line with what our city charter says in regards to public health. Um, one other item, I do think it's also, is going to be important to stop the level of fear. I, I guess I already hit that point, I'm sorry. Um, I, I'll, I'll wrap it up, but thank you.
So I actually want to speak on this. I haven't spoken on it yet, if you don't mind. So if we were to, so let's just say the 28th gets lifted, okay? We're on vacation that week, so we're not even going to be back in school until the 7th. And then we have all of the traveling that the students have done and the teachers have done for that week beforehand. If we don't see, and if we keep it at the 21st, we don't see an increase in numbers or absences from substitutes because that was the major concern before, was the lack of teachers. If at the 14th meeting, the numbers are looking good, we can readdress it, but I think we should follow what public health is saying, which is stick to the 21st. But we're not without, you know, marker points in the meantime. The kids are already not going to be in school, but clearly going away and doing things. A week back, we don't want to be without substitute, or without teachers and needing to rely on a small pool of substitutes. And then we can reassess on the 14th, but let's just keep it at the 21st like public health says. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I can't, I'm not going to support this. Everybody knows I'm not going to support this. Because once we go back to the 21st, then all of a sudden, we're going to be on vacation, then we're going to put the mask back on again. We had two parents come up here talking about that their children had medical exempts, and they didn't follow, they were denied. And again, we have no policy, we're voting on motions with no policy to back anything. So where is the policy that says, children with medical exempts, uh, we're going to follow, and they don't have to wear the mask? Students with religious exempts, whatever it is, they don't have to wear the mask. We, we're going to be back in the same position, and you know, the parents are going to get fed up here, and it's going to get worse here for the simple reasons that we are now denying kids with medical exempts not to be able to, not to wear the masks. And so-
Aren't we voting now on the amendment? Aren't we voting on, make the date to 28th of February?
Yeah, we're, we're talking-
Have we voted on that, have we?
No, we didn't vote on it yet.
We're talking about the amendment, Ms. Seem.
And so I'm looking at the policy, we're going back to the recommendations. The Health Department with Bobby Bagley did not vote to extend the mask. So if you want to talk about the science and you want to talk about the policies here in the city, the Board of Health did not make any more recommendations to extend. So either we're going to follow the science and follow the recommendations of the Board of Health, or we're not going to do it at all. Because all we've done was piece the puzzle together and Scotch-tape everything. And I'll tell you, again, if I was a parent with a child here who has a disability and was denied here, I would be screaming even louder. Because these kids, and I don't mean that in a negative way, our students who have a disability and have the exempt, and they're being tossed out of school and left in front of the school, that is a lawsuit waiting to happen here. And I cannot consciously continue with this. And so if we're going to do the recommendations, then Ms. Bagley and the Board of Public Health needs to come back in here and vote and say, we're going to extend these masks, and we're going to recommend this. They did not. That's why O dash, two-two dash, zero-zero-six is going before the Board of Aldermen tomorrow night to rescind the mask by the 28th of February. And I'll tell you, nobody, and I agree with Mrs. Orlando, nobody, I, well, I have the exempt, but nobody even asks me when I walk into a store, nobody's wearing the masks anymore. We're done, we're finished, the science isn't out there anymore. Because anybody who wears the mask, like yours, and, and the science says from the CDC, if there's any room on the site, you can still get the germs, and we're not following protocol of CDC type mask and N95s, which is a medical device. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
Can we vote on the amendment now, please?
You calling the vote?
Yes, please.
Would you reread the, would you reread the amendment to me? I just want to make sure I'm not confused, because I'm getting very confused.
So, Ms. Seem, we're, it's been called, the amend, we're voting on the amendment to the original motion to begin February 28, 2022, instead of March 21, 2022. So that's what we're voting on right now.
Would I, could I, as a courtesy, as, I know, I just am asking Ms. Lamphier if she'd be willing, all right, I'm ready.
Okay. On the amendment to be, sorry, on the motion to amend the original motion to begin 228, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I just need to make, so this amendment would move the date up to December, uh, February 28th?
So it-
I thought I understood it.
Yeah, so this is to move up the date to February 28th, all in line with the city?
No, I vote no.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Gilio?
I abstain.
Ms. Raymond? Oh, she did. If only she could call in here. Oh, she hasn't called back. Okay, she is not here. Ms. Lamphier?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop votes no. So this, one, two, three, four. Well, Heather's not here, so it's eight instead of nine. We have four yeses and one abstention and three noes. So the yeses have it. Hold on, guys, we can cheer outside. It'll be, you're going to have a big party. One second, okay? So now we have to vote on the motion that Ms. Raymond made in regards to following the approved health and safety measures listed above with the amend, as amended, uh, to reflect the February 28th. Okay, any discussion on this? Okay. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
Ms. Gilio?
I abstain.
Ms. Raymond is not here. Ms. Lamphier?
Um, uh, yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
And Ms. Bishop will vote yes. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, and one, two noes. Is somebody calling in here?
Not me.
Mrs. Neil? Hello? Neil? Okay, you got kicked out, hold on.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, on the motion, it has passed five to two with one abstention and one absence. Okay. That's the end of the mask debate forever, right? Okay. So I am now looking, well, hold on, I have a non-public, uh, in regards to the contract that I am going to ask to postpone to the end so we can do second public comments, board member comments, and then we can go into non-public and then just end the meeting. We don't need to-
Do you want to make a motion to move the contracts till after public comment?
Do you want to make a motion, or do you just want to get consensus? Because I don't, I don't think anybody wants us to go into non-public while they're still here, let's just-
That's, I agree with-
Go through? Just get consensus on it? Okay. So we are now going to move-
Contracts, if we're talking about?
Uh, Ms. Seem, we'll talk about that in non-public?
About what contract is?
Yeah, we'll talk about that, yeah.
The contract that it is?
I'll tell you more about the contract when we go into non-public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, looking at second public comments, can somebody give me the list?
Thank you, sir.
Of course. Okay, so, uh, again, three minutes, 15-minute, uh, reassessments. All right, that's a work term. Sorry, 15-minute, we'll do another motion. Um, first one up, Ms. Houston. If everybody is done talking, can you turn your, um, microphones off?
I'm sorry, I didn't look into it, this is my first meeting. If I wanted to speak, please, to sign that paper, and is it too late for me to add my name to the second comment?
Well, I'd like it to be normal standing that you go and sign up for this, but I recognize it's your first. I know. What's your name?
Julie Collinger, H-U-L-L-I-N-G-E-R.
What's, and I'll just get the information from you. Well, no, we need, uh, address.
23 Legacy Drive.
Okay. Ms. Houston, go ahead.
Uh, Alicia Houston, Westwood Drive. Um, I actually wanted to come up and talk about, um, school safety issues and concerns. Um, it, it has been brought to my attention recently that there may or may not be a policy, um, that affords people the opportunity to use alternating bathrooms. Um, and there was an incident at, um, one of my children's schools where there was a female student in the bathroom with him sitting next to the urinal with her phone out. So the, between that and the, the sex that we are hearing about in the bathrooms and the vaping that we're hearing about in the bathrooms, it just would seem to me that there's a piece of what we're watching for that's missing. And I also wanted to talk about safety in the sense of, you know, bullying, um, and that we do have a no-bullying policy. Um, that, I believe, is my understanding, not just between two students, but it would also expand out into, you know, teachers and students and students and teachers, and universally, because there's bullying laws, that teachers would not be allowed to, you know, per se, follow a student around, calling them the last, the wrong last name. Um, or, you know, isolating a student in a segregated area even though a student has a mask exemption. I mean, those things shouldn't be happening for the safety and the well-being of students. Um, and then additionally, I, I had heard, you know, utilizing the special education kids, um, or the, the children that are in the special education community that have exemptions, um, as pawns. Uh, I can assure you that at no point do I ever want to use my own children and their experiences as pawns. My job as their mother is to protect them and to guide them to be strong-willed, independent thinkers who have all of their protective measures taken care of by me. And I'm supposed to teach them how to advocate for themselves. You cannot advocate for an exemption from masking with a medical diagnosis if the school district refuses multiple times at the district level to afford that opportunity. And now, when asked how to escalate it to bring it in front of the full board, I am now being sent back to district office, who has already denied this request. So there is no appeal request. So I'm in front of this board on record today, um, requesting a formal, full meeting, a special meeting for myself and the board to be done in non-public to address the issue of the non-compliance of the Nashville School District with exemptions under 504 accommodations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe let's, uh, help these kids out.
Okay, Crystal King?
Hi, um, yeah, so I wanted to talk first about something that I was, uh, last week years old when I found out, and it made me a little uneasy. Um, you know, um, we have, well, I'm all for people being who they are, um, and everything like that. I, I find it very odd that at a high school level, we're allowing, um, we're allowing, I'm trying to think of how to phrase this where it's not going to be offensive, but we're allowing transgendered individuals to share locker rooms and bathrooms with cisgender, um, people, individuals. And, um, that, I gotta say, makes me feel very uneasy. Like I have, I, like I said, I have like a sophomore, but I also have a very small, like, I have a first grader. So like, I know that it's not really being looked at at the elementary level, but the middle school and the high school levels there are, and there was sexual assaults reported in the middle schools. And I can just imagine this being exasperated by that happening where they're allowed. And then they were like, well, if you don't feel, like as a cisgender person, if you don't feel comfortable using the bathroom that's assigned to you, you can just use a unisex one. I implore the board to look into this, um, just for safety, safety in general. Um, also, I'm gonna kind of piggyback off of what Alicia said about using, um, students with disabilities as pawns. Um, you know, I, I commend the student that spoke about that. Like, it, it really speaks wonders, um, for, you know, your original thought. Um, however, I am also not using my child with a disability as a pawn. Um, and it irritates me that that's how it's being looked at. Um, there are a lot more students in this district than one might imagine that struggle wearing masks, um, and cannot do it, and are being essentially punished by the administration and the board, for that matter, because you guys are the ones that put them on there, um, that can't deal with it, can't just sit still. I can assure you that my six-year-old does not have her mask covering her face and nose at all hours of the school day, um, let alone when, when she's just sitting in her, in her, uh, seat in class, um, because I've watched her not have it on. So, yeah, um, thank you guys all, um, for having that happen for our kids. Um, just hope that it's not about power at this point, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Markou?
Uh, Adam Markou, I live at Ford Jalory Lane. I have several children in the Nashville School District. Um, I'm glad that we're addressing the pay for substitute teachers. We've been talking about substitutes forever. My concern is that their starting pay will exceed some of our hourly employees. And it puts us, I think, between a rock and a hard place. Because we pull our paraeducators to cover everything, and now maybe we'll have substitutes and they won't have to be pulled, but the starting pay to be a sub may be more than what they're being paid as a para. So I guess having substitutes is a good problem to have and something that we will have to look at as a district and with the union, um, with that contract. My second, um, thing for tonight was regarding the superintendent's search. I emailed the board, um, a few weeks ago, concerned that we, the public, all of us, everyone, found out who the candidates were from a Facebook post. There was no public release to the employees of this district, to the citizens of the district, explaining the process. There were some times scheduled for the interviews, and they started differently than they were initially posted, and then that video is magically not online. Um, and we had heard nothing about the process. I fully respect that the board has the right to set the process and how they're going to approach it. I also know that you have a consulting agency that has been working with you on the previous search and the search. But what I'm upset about is that we, the public, have not been informed about this process since the second round of this search started. On December 6th, there was an update to the website, the first day of- The first day of interviews for the finalists was nothing on the website until Tuesday after the first round of interviews. We in Nashua are invested in our district. Our parents are invested, our staff is invested, the community is invested. We're going to be selecting, or you're going to be selecting, the next educational leader of our school district for years to come, hopefully. And we didn't know what was happening, and we really still don't. So I ask that maybe the board can give us an update on what that process is moving forward, just so we can be aware of where this is going, because I think we, the public, have a right to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. John Cathy.
I have to go. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. We do have an email if you have something that you want to email us.
That's it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Before you start my time, can I just clarify the Board of Aldermen tomorrow? There is an ordinance being introduced tomorrow. Just for clarification, the process is first reading, then it goes to committee, then it comes back. We could suspend the rules and read it again and vote on it, but I don't want to make any promises. I just want everyone to know how the process works. But there is an ordinance for ending the mask mandate effective tomorrow night at midnight. So, I'm here tonight because I became aware that there were non-academic surveys being distributed to students on Friday, January 28, 2022, in direct violation of the school district's policies under Section I, Policy ILD, titled Non-Educational Questionnaire Surveys and Research, which was created in direct response to NHRS A18611. This policy says that surveys that elicit information about a student's social, behavioral, family life, religion, politics, sexual orientation, sexual activity, drug use, or any other information not related to a student's academics, when you have these surveys in schools, you must give the parents 10 days' notice. I did not receive any notice. I don't know any parents that did receive a notice that these surveys were being handed out. If my information is incorrect and the ILD policy wasn't adhered to, I'd like evidence provided of such, including proof that emails were sent and a link to all the surveys, because the policy says they have to be on the district's website. If not, I hope that the school board, the school district, would delete and/or destroy those surveys and then issue a new notice so parents can opt out if they would like to. Furthermore, one of the questions on the survey said, and I quote, "May I use these pronouns when I contact home?" This is a problem. Regardless of intent, this clearly implies that the teachers, administrators, staff, and indirectly this board are willing to keep information about our kids a secret from parents. It's not acceptable. I understand that you want to hand out surveys. That's fine. And if given proper notice and the policies are followed, that's within your purview. But keeping information about my kids or other kids secret from their parents is an issue. That's a problem. We can't be keeping information, especially information such as these issues from parents. We can't do that. That's not what the role of the school is. So I would respectfully ask that the board would look into this issue. I have the names of the teachers that I know passed out these surveys. I will happily give that to you in confidence, and I hope this matter can be addressed and avoided in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Hoffman.
Gary Hoffman, 38 Perham Street. I'd like to thank Alderman Cathy for just clarifying the process with the Board of Aldermen. That's certainly helpful. No problem. I just want to echo what Adam said about the new substitute contract. You know, it's great that we're trying to find some new ways to attract substitutes, and hopefully this service will, you know, will increase this up rate. However, we have to remember that many of our paras start at under $15 an hour, and some of them do some very important work. And looking at especially the bill rate, it's in excess of many of their starting pay. So I guess this is a challenge to this board. If we're going to pay the subs more, we really need to, and this current negotiations pay the paras more, at the very least. Secondly, I've spoken to some people in the cities, and they really say that this teacher's contract really needs to be ratified soon. They're really counting on the $2.3 million in healthcare savings. The taxpayers, we are definitely going to need it. And if we're going to get to open enrollment, we need this contract settled now. So, you know, there's really not a lot of time. We need to not be penny-wise and pound-foolish to save, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars and giving away 2.3 million. So please settle the contract now. We've certainly waited, been very patient with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Thibodeau.
Derek Thibodeau, 9 Emerson Road.
Thibodeau, sorry. I was just correcting myself.
Oh, okay.
I put a couple extra letters in there.
All the time. So, you know, I wasn't going to speak at all, but Ms. Johnson, you know, when Mr. Porter came up here and spoke and said that they weren't rescinding the mask mandate, you came up and you said, "Get your facts straight, they are," and you read the motion. Incorrect for one. The kid's a high school student. He came up and he actually gave the right information. We do not know. Unless you have a crystal ball, we do not know tomorrow if it will be rescinded. We will be voting on it, and maybe we will, maybe we'll be voting on it if it passes the motion. The mask mandate before, only five voted to not have masks. So it's very possible the board still may be going till the 28th. It may not. You may be 100% right. We may rescind it tomorrow. But the people that left here and the people that were watching earlier and may have shut this off, believe now that the mask mandate is going to be rescinded tomorrow night, no matter what, because you said it twice. So to me, I think it was done on purpose, to be honest. And so people have the wrong idea out there, and that's not the way. You also said that you don't let people tell you what to do. So do you speed? Do you stop at stop signs? That's all mandated by the city. So again, I'll talk to this person here. So when Hunter spoke, people on the side were snickering. One person back there was holding up a sign, "End Masks." They care about their kids, they care about all kids, but then when a kid's speaking, and same thing with Semai, he spoke, and people were commenting on how long he was speaking. So do we care about the kids in the city, all of them, or just your own? Because I care about all of them. Okay? And the last thing I'm going to say, the contract. We need to get it signed. We need to have this before the Board of Aldermen. We are losing teachers. We've doubled the retirement of teachers this year from what we normally get. We have to sign the contract. We have to figure it out. We have to keep our teachers here. They can get more pay going to other towns. You know? I'm glad we're taking care of the subs, but we got to take care of everyone. Please, please, please meet and get this done. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, I spoke to the whole other side tonight. Thank you. Okay, well, that's actually it. Sorry. That is the end of the second public comment. We are looking at going into a non-public in regards to contract updates, as it says on the agenda.
Are we going to have board comments before we close?
Do we want to do board comments first?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Board comments. I'll go around the circle. Ms. Darling.
I'll make it quick because I know it's late. I just want to say, Hunter, specifically Mr. Porter, I am so proud of you. It is really nice whenever we see students getting up and talking. You're a very passionate speaker, which I've told you before. And I'm disappointed at the people that were not listening respectfully. As for the mask situation, I spoke with a dear friend of mine who is a therapist, and she pointed out that when you have gone through a trauma, one of the first things we naturally try to do is avoid the triggers to that trauma. There is not a single professional alive today who has said that this pandemic has not been traumatic for everybody. And I fully understand people's desire and need to see the masks removed, because it's a visual reminder every day that we are still in this and we're still dealing with it, and we have to be hyper vigilant. You know, and ultimately, I hope we made the right decision.
That's it. Thank you. Ms. Lambier.
I just wanted to thank everyone who came tonight and spoke.
Aren't I second?
Yes. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize.
I thought I was second.
What are you seconding?
He's second chair.
No, I thought I was second after Christina.
Oh, you can be. Go ahead.
Oh, it's just, we're all out of whack because we had so many people calling in that the circle looks different.
Oh, wait. I'll go last.
And then you have more to say. I just want to let the Alderman know that I said 0-22006. I read what's coming on the agenda, rescinding the face-covering ordinance prior to February 28, 20, and I said the endorsement. I didn't say what's going to exactly happen. It should happen tomorrow night. Fine. But you know, I hope it does happen because it would have to be voted on, and it would have to make a motion in order for this to be rescinded before the 28th to suspend the rules for first and second reading tomorrow night. Okay? I'm not stupid. I sat on the board, but enough was enough with this. I also want to say, and I listened to the parents, and I'd like to know what happened here, that emails went out regarding, I wrote my notes down here. Okay, I lost my paper now. Alderman Cathy, I'd like to know those emails that got sent out, who's gave permission to send them out? Because that shouldn't happen. That's the first thing. And also, I can't find my notes. I'm sorry. It's been a long night. I made some notes down here, but it, those should not go out. Who's authorizing them? Who's sending them out? And we should get a hold on all this, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey.
Now you're up.
Now it's your turn.
I could go last. Told you.
No, it's fine. You're next up in the circle.
Okay.
The conch shell goes to you.
All right. Thank you. I guess first I want to put to the students who came tonight hoping to have some kind of closure on all the work that they've done. Mr. Rich was there, and I'm sorry that we weren't able to move that to a special day before you all came out here. The second thing, and I want to thank Mrs. Zeeb for saying that she'd like to hear from the nose, for asking us for that opportunity. Are we allowed to talk about any of the details of the ESSS contract?
Well, it's already been voted on now. If you, so discussions-
Can we talk about the payment? The payment that's in there or not?
Well, we're past that, but if you have questions, I feel like you could probably email Mr. Donovan, but-
I don't have questions. I want to make a comment about my no vote, because I was the only one.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
So can I refer to specific pieces of that contract?
Sure.
Okay. So right now, we're paying $77. During the pandemic last year, we were paying $115. I think part of the problem, I think the shortage this year has been exacerbated by the fact that we cut their pay so much. So with this contract, subs are going to get a whopping $90, which is $13 more. We're going to be paying the company almost $120. So $30 of the $120 that we pay to a daily sub will be going to the company that got the contract. Secondly, the building subs, the permanent, or the building subs will receive the same pay, $130, excuse me, $125. No increase in that pay. And I forgot to mention, last year, we were paying $115, $115. Now we're going to be going up to a whopping $90. So the building subs are going to get $125, which is the same. On top of that, we're going to be paying the consulting firm $35 per head. That was, I'm trying to explain my no vote on that. Manchester is now paying $115. They just increased it last month. The second thing I want to explain was my no vote on the amendment. As I said during my campaign, I think the CDC and the American Association of Pediatrics, I think they have big brains. I think the young man who spoke tonight clearly has a big brain. We didn't hear from pediatricians tonight. We didn't hear from epidemi-
Epidemic?
We didn't hear from doctors, epidemiologists. I'm going to trust the experts. I think they have big brains. So I know it's only a couple weeks difference, but I would certainly change my vote if those two organizations change their recommendations. They haven't done that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Ms. Giulio.
I'm kind of building a little bit on what Mr. Claffey said. It's not in my nature to usually not vote either one way or the other, but I have to explain to all of you, or maybe I don't because you should know it by now, that this mask decision from the very beginning through everyone's speeches tonight about it has been the hardest thing for me to deal with since I've become a board member. And there have been some real hard issues, but this has been extremely difficult. Like Mr. Claffey, I would have been more inspired to have voted yes in favor of it with either date if the CDC had also agreed that it was time to take masks off the children in schools, but they have not reached that point yet. I found myself going back and forth and back and forth, and I felt that the only valid thing for me to do was to say, "I really just don't know where to go with this." And so that is why I did not cast a vote one way or the other, but I think you all have the right to know why that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Thank you. So in regards to masks and also kind of a nod to Ms. Giulio, who I respect very much, I'm glad that we're going to have the masks, whether, or the option whether to wear masks or not, citywide soon and in the school district. But with that, I'd like to encourage people to use, embrace the opportunity to show kindness to others and their choices moving forwards. It's not about no mask versus wear a mask. It's about everyone having the option to do what's right for them. So I think that's important, that we're not judging each other for those choices. I actually want to give a shout-out into agreement to Mr. Marko. I actually agree that the board should do better about being transparent. I think that we do not communicate enough. I think parents, teachers, other board members, I think we all would do better if we talk a little more, talk a little more freely. And I hope that that's something that we can all take into consideration moving forward. So thank you for all the people that come out, that came out tonight. It's been a long one and emotional one, and I appreciate it, and the administration always as well. Thank you.
Ms. Zeeb. Ms. Zeeb? Do you want to do any public comment?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm proud to speak loud. The phone is not always clear. I would like to say that the first lady who spoke that wanted a hearing before the board, I think obviously we try to take things in order. So first you go, you know, to wherever the incident happened, to the teacher, you go to the principal, or the principal, you go then to the superintendent's office. If you have done that, then my understanding, and I don't claim to know everything, but my understanding is that at that point, you certainly have a right to a hearing before the board. But I'm sure that Mrs. Bishop or someone on the board or one of the administrators can talk to the attorney about that, and, but I believe that you are entitled to it, and certainly it should be looked into. As to all of the incidents that are happening, I have been saying for a long, long time that we need to look at these policies. Our teachers actually came this year and almost begged, in my view, for us to look at some of the discipline problems, policies, if you will. And we still haven't done it. I understand that we are far behind in getting rid of the obsolete policies, but the obsolete policies are not hurting anybody. But the lack of discipline appears to be causing some really serious problems. So I would beg the board, I would beg administration, I would beg anybody who wants to hear me cry, let's do something about these issues. Let's not, let's not get our priorities mixed up. And to me, that's a huge mix-up. And then I want to thank the two Aldermen for coming. I want to say to you that the very fact that you came to our meeting speaks well to you. Obviously, as an Alderman, I'm sure your time is precious. I'm sure, like us, you are called on to attend many, many meetings, and you're busy as a busy, busy, busy bee. And so for you to take time to come to one of our meetings, I think says that your heart is in the right place and your time to speak comes in just and do a good job. And I personally thank you for that because I admire that, and I want you to know that we recognize the contribution you are making. And I appreciate also the fact that you brought the survey. I had no idea. I think that we will look into that, certainly. And the information that has come out in this last, in this last public comment was invaluable, and I thank everyone over there for it because- was invaluable, and I thank everyone before it, because, because when we work together as a team, when the right arm and the left arm talk to each other, in the whole, we're going to all be better informed, and being better informed will make better decisions. And so I was hope to working with all of you and hope that we can resolve some of these issues. And finally, there is one issue on the contract. There was a teacher tonight who said that, I think she was referring to me, she thought that I had, I think she thought I had talked down to the board. If it appears that I was talking down to your board, to, to the meeting, I apologize. That would never, never, never be my intent. My, I find the board valuable. I find our teachers are invaluable. It's a noble profession. I have two teachers in my family, and I hold them in high regard because I think it is a noble profession. So I certainly wouldn't want anybody to think, but I do have to say that with the contract, the, the one thing that I have never said about the contract, and I want to say it now, the one thing I have not said about it is that, that for me, like, the president's issue is no longer an issue for me. I, I think to some extent that's been resolved. I certainly hope so, it sounds like it. But I still have a problem with the salary scandal, and we want to have a, not, we have to towards 4% of it, but I agreed to pay 4%. What I didn't agree to, and what I, at least what I don't think I agreed to, and certainly they may disagree, and, and I respect their right to disagree, and we misunderstand each other, yes, we can. So if that's something, I'm sorry. But my whole issue, my bottom line, heartwrecking issue to me is that that NPU team is primarily tenured teachers. And because it's tenured teachers, if I, if, I must be totally misunderstanding, or they are asking for more for themselves than the beginning and middle teachers are getting. And the beginning teachers and the middle teachers in Nashville are not competitive. And we cannot afford not to be competitive, because as everybody keeps saying, we need teachers, and we need them desperately. And if we're not competitive, they're going to go where it is competitive, as everybody would, in, in the best interest of their own family. So when the, so, and, and the bottom line is that if they all get 1%, the tenured teachers get more anyway. But in their negotiating, they wanted more than, than, than a level field. And that's the only way I'm allowed to say that. And if it means I'm going to be shot, well, then I'm sorry. But that part of that contract broke my heart, and I, I thought we tried very hard to make them understand that we don't have unlimited money. We're paying more than we can afford, and, and I, and I did that willingly, but I'm not willing to give them more than the beginning and middle teachers. I'm not.
I'm sorry. Sandra, I just think in regards to the contract, we're going to, we can probably discuss that at another time, but I, I think you-
I have a right, Mr. Bishop, to, to say that. I checked that through the attorney, and I made that a conscious decision. So you will not stop it. It's finished anyway, but I am offended that you do that, and I want to know. I have a right. They said what they thought, and they were honest, but I have to hide stuff? No. My day is now, and I just said what I said. And they don't have to agree. Nobody has to agree. But I will have my day before. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A32B and RSA 91A32C.
I'll move. Second.
So Johnson, Gilio, Ms. Darling? Yes. Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
I'm sorry. Yes.
To go into non-public. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Okay, so we probably will need to come back out and have a vote, but I don't think you guys need to, we can just put it in the minutes later. We don't have to wait for it. Okay. Yep, let's stop the recorder. We're now in non-public. It is 9:25.